I see a couple of things come in, in the chat here. And so I'm just going to address some of those questions. I think most of them are going to all panelists. I will just, I'll introduce some of the, I guess, mechanics of the meeting in my introduction in a moment here. How you engage, how you, you know, provide your questions and your comments and things like that. So I will, I'll get to that in a moment. I would not suggest if you can avoid using the chat function. We don't have a sign in sheet or a signup feature or anything for this evening, for anybody that may want to provide contact information, but you certainly can put your, if you wish to have a follow up you and you want to put your contact information in the chat. I would select the dropdown instead of putting it to all panelists or all attendees. Or if you want to put it to all panelists, that's fine because that'll just be internally. But you know, you may not want to share that with all attendees. So just make sure that you're selecting the appropriate option from the dropdown. It's six o'clock. I'm going to get us started here and I understand people are still, still rolling in, so. Try to speak a little slowly here to let everyone join us, but good evening to everybody. You know, first and foremost, I want to thank you all for giving us some of your time this evening to learn a little bit about and provide your comments on this proposed stormwater fee. I really hope you and all your families are doing well and staying safe and healthy during this, during this time. My name is David Probolka. I'm the Ferguson Township Manager. I'm going to be acting as the, I guess, facilitator this evening throughout the initial presentation and the subsequent question and answer session that we've reserved for, for the second half of the meeting. And in just a moment here, I'm going to introduce some of the panelists that I'll be joining this evening, who will be presenting and responding to any of your questions. But prior to doing that, I'd like to just cover, as I said, some procedural matters so that we can have the most productive dialogue and give everybody an opportunity to participate and engage. First, this meeting is being held entirely, as you can see, in a virtual environment using the Zoom platform. But it's also being recorded and simulcast live on CNET on Channel 7, as well as CNET's YouTube channel. Our initial intention, of course, was to host this meeting in person in a public space. However, due to restrictions on social gatherings in the wake of the pandemic, we've opted for this platform. But I am confident that we'll be able to facilitate a productive dialogue with our venue here this evening. Many of you have submitted questions and comments on the proposed fee in response to the postcards that were mailed out just a few weeks ago. We have collected those and our consultants conducting this, this survey or this study will respond to some during their presentation and the remainder will be addressed afterward. Additionally, attendees are welcome to submit questions both during and after the presentation through one of the following methods. First, you may use these Q and A feature at the bottom of the, of your screen. Also, there's a link on the homepage of the township's website at twp.ferguson.pA.us where you can use that to submit questions via the online form. And then finally, we have set up this evening so that attendees and viewers at home can reach representatives of the township to submit your questions. A phone queue that you can access by calling the main line, that's 814-238-4651. And I'm going to ask Centrice to punch that into the group, into the chat using the all panelists and attendee. But engagement method. So you can dial that number 814-238-4651. And then when the automated attendant picks up the, the voice on the other line, they'll want to press number nine on your phone. And that's going to drop you right into a queue where one of three representatives from the township will answer as soon as one is available. They are going to record your questions and then send them to me via email. And then I will pass them along to one of our panelists. So I think that will be an effective way so that we can ensure that everybody has an opportunity to submit questions and receive a response. Before I move ahead with the introductions, I'd like to describe a little bit of the reasoning behind why this stormwater fee is being considered by the Board of Supervisors. As many of you know, the township is responsible for many miles and millions of dollars of public infrastructure designed to manage stormwater runoff from impervious area and upstream sources. This infrastructure includes pipes and inlets, stormwater basins and swales, road drainage and conveyance systems and much more. Over the years, the cost of maintaining and replacing this infrastructure has increased exponentially to where it is now nearly a million dollar per year liability and steadily increasing. In addition to this obligation, unfunded mandates from the state and federal government passed on to the township via the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination Systems Municipal Separate Storm Source System or MS4 Permit Program adds to our cost liability by requiring compliance with several minimum control measures ranging from public education and outreach to a comprehensive Chesapeake Bay pollutant reduction strategy. Historically, the township, like all municipalities in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, funded this program through revenue collected from taxes in our general fund. While this concept of a stormwater fee is not new across the country, it was only relatively recently that enabling legislation was adopted at the state level to permit certain classes of municipalities to assess this fee to fund stormwater management. Since then, many municipalities across the state, both urban and rural, have enacted this program and fee structure. In 2017, the Board of Supervisors directed the completion of a stormwater fee feasibility study. After a competitive request for proposal process, the contract was awarded to the firm Amic Foster Wheeler, now known as Wood. A year-long feasibility study was completed, which included a public engagement and education process, the convening of a stormwater advisory committee comprised of residents, subject matter experts and stakeholders representing the business community, homeowners associations, agriculture and more, and ultimately board review and direction to proceed. The question being answered was fairly simple. Is the implementation of a stormwater fee in Ferguson Township feasible? Meaning, can we justify the costs, manage the invoicing and revenue generated and properly account for and administer the program? The answer was yes. Following the results of that study, the board directed the second phase of that analysis to move forward, which would be more focused on the details of a proposed program, meaning what it would look like, what it would cover, what any credit structure would look like and more details that'll be shared with you this evening. And in short, that is where we are tonight. The second phase is nearing its conclusion and more details are available to share with our residents, businesses and representatives on what a proposed program might look like. There's a few important points to note as you listen and participate this evening. First, the decision to implement or not implement a stormwater fee has not yet been made. The Board of Supervisors will be asked to consider an ordinance in the fall of this year, which, if enacted, would formally establish this program and fee structure. Second, we are not here to defend the implementation of a stormwater fee. That is a policy decision that will be up to the elected officials with input from you all, as well as our consultant and the stormwater advisory committee to determine whether it is in the best interest of the township. Third, I'm asking you all to agree with me on one critical point. Stormwater management is a utility, much more akin to sanitary sewer or potable drinking water and not a public service like police or local planning. The reason I say this is because a big driver of why many communities across the country have opted for this fee is because it provides a way to charge property owners based on their contribution to the problem, as well as credit them for things that they're doing to mitigate their. This is an important point because other means of covering these expenditures, such as a generalized tax increase, whether it be on earned income or on real property, would by definition not be considerate of the impact of each property on the stormwater management system. Finally, while we truly appreciate the influx of questions we received, some of them were very specific to properties and issues that you've all experienced managing runoff in your own backyards. For these questions, instead of addressing them here this evening, we will follow up afterward to get more information and provide some useful feedback for you. All that said, I'd like to introduce some of my colleagues that are on the call with me this evening. I'm joined tonight by several members of township staff, including David Maudricker, the Director of Public Works, Ron Seibert, Township Engineer, and Centrice Martin, Assistant to the Manager. Representing the professional consulting firm engaged to complete this study is Virginia Thornton and Elizabeth Treadway. We also have some elected officials that are on the call as attendees, but they are not here tonight as participants. They're here to listen and take feedback from you all. I will now turn it over to Elizabeth, who has a presentation prepared to provide you with more background before we proceed to the question and answer portion of the town hall. Elizabeth? Can you, can you unmute, please? There we go.
Okay. I hope that everyone can see the screen. It's an opportunity for us to keep you focused on the topics at hand and allow us to move through the subject matter. It's a privilege to be here this evening. Really do appreciate the engagement and you're taking your time to be educated on all the work that we've been doing. Dave has introduced the process and if I could just make my computer move, that would be wonderful, wouldn't it? Come on. Don't do this to me. Slide, would you please? Next, this is not the way to do this. I don't know why my screen is wanting to lock up, but it's doing that.
If it doesn't free up, I can, I can take it back and drive from my seat here too.
Yeah, I don't know why, Dave, we tested it this morning. It worked just perfectly, but.
We did, it was. All right, I'm going to take you back here and.
Sorry, I apologize for that, everyone.
Just start sharing mine here. And then Elizabeth, you can just tell me when you want me to advance through the slides.
Absolutely. Okay, let's excuse me, again, we've been through that. This tells you the same information that Dave just shared, phone number to call in to choose nine, should you call in and present a question, as well as your opportunity to go to the Ferguson website and be able to type in a question that you may have. So those would certainly be followed up. Let's go to the next slide, Dave. So Dave set the stage of really what this event is about, the purpose of what we're attempting to accomplish in support of the township. So this is a sharing of information. I think it is really important, Dave's emphasis, that this is a collaborative effort. It's been going on for a while. I'll show you the timeline. We have an engaged stormwater advisory committee that really has offered great direction to the staff and to our team of consultants. And again, to reiterate Dave's comment that it really is the Board of Supervisors that in the end, our advice is professionally driven to give our perspective, but it is indeed up to the board to make this policy decision. Let's go to the next slide. So Dave touched a bit on what's driving the need for the additional resources. And there are additional resources that need to be generated in order to address this challenging infrastructure. We're seeing the demands being placed on the infrastructure increase, that there are priorities that need to be addressed, that there are regulatory issues, as Dave mentioned, and certainly ongoing in maintenance and operation. Sustaining this infrastructure is cheaper to do now than to fix when it fails. And so it's important that our focus was recognizing these objectives are there. What is the feasibility of being able to implement a fee for service to support this utility? The next slide. So why, again, to answer this question, I believe, Dave, these things all just slide in one at a time. So Dave talked about the regulatory requirements and I appreciate the kind of jargon we easily fall into. And so we'll try to avoid that, but you have a water quality permit that is mandated that you must comply with and address the impacts on the Chesapeake Bay. Next. It really is to understand that the complexity, as Dave said, of doing stormwater, which is managing on behalf of the community, the runoff that is generated, that gets generated and is due to the amount of impervious hardened surfaces that exist within the community. And so these issues are becoming more complex. We're going to talk specifically about some of those. But the value of the investment that you have in this infrastructure is important to maintain and create a resiliency for it. The next item. Obviously, we're all getting older and so does the infrastructure. Regardless of what kind of infrastructure we all depend on in our quality of life. We're having an infrastructure that is bringing us clean water, takes water away, manages runoff, provides for disposal of solid waste. These are very traditional public works operations. And your infrastructure is indeed aging with some critical components that are reaching failure stage. Go to the next one, please. As I said, you know, reacting to problems when failures occur, a sinkhole opens, a pipe collapses, you get a retaining wall, the breaks. The staying ahead of and making sure that these problems are kept to an absolute minimum is really a great fiscal policy and one that the township is, has invested in other endeavors as well. And so this is one of those infrastructures that right now is, is calling for some critical reinvestment. And the last item that we have on the screen is the issue that communities and the density of communities right there within the valley are really helpful and most helpful in emergency response. It, it's not easy to share resources and plan your future on a day-to-day basis by doing regional solutions, but there certainly have been regional solutions that have been implemented around the country. Let's go to the next slide. We got a really great group of citizens engaged in this discussion. They will have met when the study is complete next month. Sixteen times with us. We have turned them into really savvy, knowledgeable stormwater folks. Perhaps not to the degree to those of us who deal with it every day, but their input has been invaluable. And we asked them this series of questions. We really wanted their guidance on what's important to the community. What are our priorities? What are the compelling issues that need to be addressed? How can additional funding be provided? And what are the principles that ought to be used in, in creating the necessary revenues? And so the bottom line question, as Dave said, came to in the first phase of the work. Is it feasible to put a fee for service in place? Based on the issues that we identified, the priorities that were identified, not just the operational capability, but really to understand then what is the most appropriate long-term funding strategy? And the answer came back to us through the committee, through board leadership, through staff to continue to drive through this process of evaluating implementation of a fee. So let's go to the next slide. A brief timeline, we started the phase one of the project three years ago, which really kind of surprised us when we put this timeline together. Hadn't thought about the fact that we're in three years now. Part of the timeline between phase one and phase two is the competitive process of selecting the phase two consultant. And then we all know what's happened this spring. It has really made our life as supporting consultants and working with staff even more complex. But we completed the initial phase one work in 2018. We moved into the spring of 2019 for the second phase. We are now coming to conclusion on the work assignment in the second phase that would ultimately lead to a presentation to the Board of Supervisors for them to wrestle with this very important and difficult decision on how to move this forward. Our timeline for planning is a potential implementation in 2021. It is just that we needed to have a start date and so we worked off of 2021 as a start date. That is not written in stone. That's a decision that the board obviously will consider in, in their decision as to whether to move forward. The next slide. So one of the questions that was asked from the public is how are funds currently provided to this program? And there are two primary sources of funding. The primary cost of, of the general day-to-day operations is through the general fund revenues. And your general fund revenues are principally, the majority of which coming through your earned income tax and then additional resources through the estate. Let's not go forward again. I think we're jumping ahead, Dave.
I'm sorry about that. Here's where we should be, correct?
Yes, this is where we, this is where we are. So we have two primary funding methods, real estate transfer tax and property tax and earned income. There are capital projects, improvements to that drainage infrastructure that are related to roadway improvements. So when the township is working on an improvement to a roadway and has to open up the road bed, that's the time to also look at this drainage system. And so there are resources that have been used in the past and will continue to be used for projects that are roadway-driven that result in having to do physical improvement to the drainage under the roadway. And that's through your transportation improvement tax. It's dedicated, it is tracked and supported for roadway activities. So let's go to the next one. And a really brief primer on other opportunities to fund things. One of the questions from the community was, were other resources, methods of generating revenue considered? Of course, we looked at the potential impact of this program by having to do increases in local taxes, whether it's through earned income or real property. We looked at the option of using assessments. Assessments are very specific, special benefit. It's a charge only to those properties deemed to receive a special benefit from the physical infrastructure improvement. We see those a lot in the water and sewer industry, sometimes in curb and gutter being added to a roadway. But they have a very limited ability. They are typically project-driven. And again, only a small, immediately impacted group of property owners are asked to pay for that. Exactions are another general revenues at times that communities use where they charge cable company for the right of using the right-of-way, for example. That's an exaction. That's if you want to conduct business, you will pay for business licenses. You'll pay for the right of access to public property, things like that. And again, what we're seeing in the user fee business in across public works is the use of user fees that are tied to the service that's delivered. So we're very traditionally used to in this country, though forty, fifty years ago, even water and sewer was at times funded by the general fund. But we've seen these industries, these major utilities move to user fees for water, sewer, solid waste, stormwater. The first stormwater utility in the country was established in 1972. So this is not a new activity, as Dave said. It is across North America. I've worked in communities in Canada as well as from coast to coast in the United States. You have other kinds of fees that are charged, inspections, permitting. Police department may have charges for false alarm response. Those kinds of, of services are often now seen as a use fee target. So let's get a little more specific, I think. So one of the questions asked from a citizen was, how's the fee different from a tax? The tax is to, if whether you're talking property tax or an income tax, those are undesignated use funds. They are to support the general activities of a community. They are tied typically to some financial factor that you thought of as ad valorem taxes. And so we see that tied to a property value, an amount of earned income, but it's tied typically to some assessed value. They can be used for any general allowable legal purpose of the local government. A fee, however, comes with additional requirements. It's a dedicated source of income. It requires a tie between what you're charging and the amount that you're charging and who should pay. And so fees. And so fees are used a lot in our public works industry because it's designed to assign the cost out to the public more equitably, on a fairer basis, in the sense of use to be able to tie the purpose of the revenue, track it separately, spend it only for that purpose. And again, it's fully reviewed, it's adopted through a budget process. It it's allocated by your board, it is trackable. It is not something that is then reallocated to some other general purpose. You don't hire police officers with a user fee for stormwater. So let's go a little further. So the major differences then between those two basic sources of revenue, the sense of using user fees or taxing, it's who pays. It's the basis of the payment and we're going to walk through how that happens. It's the dedication and stability of the revenue. It's important to know that when you're managing major infrastructure, that you have an expectation of the resources that will come to you so that you can do long range planning, you can do long term capital investment planning. It allows you flexibility in the policies that you can adopt. And and again, the purpose of the revenue must be specifically tied to the fee itself. So it it has, I believe in this case, a direct accountability. It's transparent. You can track the budget, you will be able to see audited statements. Those kinds of things are required when you're using user fees. So let's continue on on that one. So how are stormwater fees calculated? Again, historically, we've been in this business forty five plus years. The methodology that has become best practice across North America is using the presence of hardened surfaces as the surrogate meter for the need for a public drainage system. Just as the water meter is a surrogate for the establishment and cost of treating, sourcing, treating, protecting, transmitting, disposing of drinking water, impervious area becomes the meter for stormwater. It is the development of property that changes the characteristic of rainfall runoff from its first opportunity to be absorbed into property into the land itself. And that hardened surface forces that rainwater to be sent someplace. Because of that, it becomes the the meter for allocating stormwater costs that has been tested over the last five decades, both in the courts and in established best practices. There are two methodologies that we primarily use today in calculating a billing unit for a parcel. One is the concept of the ERU. And no, we're going to explain that in much greater detail, but it refers to an equivalent residential billing unit. It equates all single family detached residential to a single billing unit regardless of the variability of impervious area. The other approach that has come out in the last probably fifteen years with a great deal of use is using a fixed billing unit of square footage of impervious area. And that's done because our availability of this data has gotten to be so much more sophisticated. It it really is allowing us to have the engineering tools to be able to be more able to look at a property regardless of its land use, but look at it from the perspective of the amount of impervious area present. The equivalent residential concept was established early on before all of our communities had access to geographical information system data like you see in this image that outlines and captures and delineates hardened surfaces. So let's go a little bit further into this. So when you're working on the concept of feasibility, you're looking for compelling needs. Is there a reason to ask the citizens, businesses of this community to provide more resources to address stormwater? And in looking at that, it became very clear to both the advisory committee and the staff reviewed this and then ultimately the board that there are outstanding priorities. The picture that you see on this side is real. It's Martin Street. It's the condition of what is called corrugated metal pipe. And I often tease my public works operations that I work with that some snake oil salesman was selling corrugated metal pipe around this country, somewhere in the seventies and eighties, because I run into this problem all over the country. Corrugated metal pipe has a much shorter lifespan. It's exposed to more opportunity to corrode, erode, break down, as you see in this picture on Martin Street. You have over sixteen miles of corrugated metal pipe in Ferguson that is reaching critical life failure, as you can see in this photograph. And so it's really important to get our arms around the size of that problem. One of the initial priorities is all of these pipes, your entire forty plus miles of pipe network need to be inspected. You need to know the condition, when they were installed, what failures are occurring, what is about to be an imminent failure? And what are the options to be able to correct this? For Martin Street, the option was to do a lining, insert a liner inside the pipe that allows you then to seal these breakdowns and extend the life of that pipe another thirty, forty, fifty years. We don't see that degree of failure in our use of high density polyethylene pipe, plastic pipe or the reinforced concrete. Do they fail? Yes, but they typically are having a longer life. We also understand that the rate options that we just talked about are really need a basis of principle. What are the values? Why, why would you choose to apply a fee directly to a property owner versus raising their property tax or increasing their income tax? And so we looked at those important feasibility elements. But one of the most important ones are the policies that can be tailored to a community. I do this all over the country. I've never built the same program. I don't duplicate it, it doesn't work that way. It really needs to be policies that address the specific conditions of your community. And so that's what we strive to achieve. So let's go a little further into the discussion. And I know we're covering a lot of really important information, but we'll follow up again with an opportunity to delve into these areas if you have specific questions. So the kind of services that are in major categories of activities that are in your stormwater program. Obviously, there is some program administration, there's oversight, there's leadership. There's important operations and maintenance of the system. There's managing the assets as an investment. So understanding again, the condition, being able to prioritize, reinvest, sustain the life of this infrastructure as long as you can, replace when absolutely necessary, respond in an emergency. You have a major event could be naturally occurring such as a storm, but being able to get to those assets and understand how they need to be managed. You have capital projects, these are more capital costs, equipment cost, system replacement. Again, improvements like lining the corrugated metal pipes where possible. And then you have that national pollutant discharge elimination system, NPDES. Individual permit issued by the state on behalf of the federal government. That set of regulations has been in place since nineteen ninety. The communities of your size were brought in in two thousand and three. You have an individual permit that requires you to do, as Dave went over, a number of compliance activities. So these are the major service categories that are focused on things like property protection, focused on sustaining the physical infrastructure, responding to emergencies, ensuring that you have a resilient system that's sustainable over time. Let's go to the next slide. So currently, out of the general fund, the resources provided are about four hundred and about four hundred thousand, you know. That is general fund money. There are additional resources being provided through your transportation improvement fund when a roadway is being opened, when an excavation can occur, when an improvement to the pipe network under that roadway can be addressed. But from the general fund resources, it's about four hundred thousand dollars at this time. We know these costs are going up. We have historical data that we were provided and can work from. We appreciate that the general cost of business in public works infrastructure management is increasing. It is an important reinvestment. You may have actually heard feedback and reports on infrastructure failures across this country. Ferguson is you're not unique. But this is an opportunity to really get our arms around these costs as they increase over time. Let's go ahead, Dave. So let's talk about specifically the rate strategies we've looked at, the potential estimated rate. And I think Virginia, this is where we pick you up at this point? No? Okay. All right, I'll do the next series of slides. We we were trading back and forth today just to say when we were going to trade off slides. Okay, let's go to the next one. Okay, so let's get deeper into the basis of the fee and the differences in the things that we evaluated and looked at in this process. Again, one of the methodologies that we considered was looking at single family residential properties. The township has great data on their impervious area on a lot by lot basis. And what we considered as one of the rate structures is to charge all single family detached residential properties one billing unit regardless of impervious area variability. Another approach that we took was to charge properties on the basis of a single billing unit regardless of land use. That's the fixed billing unit approach. And in the case of Ferguson, we approached that from a thousand square feet as the billing unit. We also recognize the different level of service that is delivered across the community based on the services, the density of property, the amount of impervious area distribution, the need for underground system maintenance, for example, compared to roadside ditches, those kinds of things, and have a discussion with the advisory committee on the use of zones or geographic differences. And in this case, we ultimately landed on looking at the growth boundary as that potential demarcation line of how services are delivered differently and therefore properties can be charged on a different basis of rates. So we really refine the analysis over time. And let's go ahead. And so is this one yours, Virginia? Nope, he went the wrong way.
I don't know how that happened.
What are you doing to me?
This this ought to be where we should be.
Yes, this is where we should be. In fact, let's go to the next slide because I think it's it's more graphically interesting than this one. It covers the same thing, it's just more graphically interesting. So one of the things that we worked with the advisory committee is there are some services, if we go to a geographic assignment of fees, there are some baseline services that everyone should participate in supporting. And so we isolated some of these baseline services as the overhead cost in some ways, it's the administration of the overall program as well as some very specific activities like compliance with the water quality permit that everyone has a stake in, that the township is accountable for all properties being able to reduce their pollutants that get picked up in the stormwater. And so we isolated some of those baseline services into a proportion of the fee structure. Then we looked at the infrastructure management costs for operations, maintenance, capital. And that's where we began to parse out the difference in services in the growth area and the non growth area. And so the alignment of costs and how they would be distributed are being driven very much by the service needs in the growth area versus the service needs in the non growth area. So I think we can proceed further. This is a map. It provides you a concept of then what is the growth area? I think you can visually see that there is a lot of development density in the blue shaded growth area versus the more open space that's served by different kinds of infrastructure. And so we took the costs and divided them across these two different boundary groups. So let's go a little bit more into the details of that. This is an example, this is not Ferguson specific. This is an example of how we would calculate then the difference between the use of an equivalent residential unit and a fixed billing unit. And the primary difference is what is the billing unit that we're using? In the equivalent residential unit, we choose the square footage billing unit that we're going to evaluate impervious area by the median of single family detached residential parcels. In this example, it's two thousand square feet. So those types of properties would be charged one billing unit. Just below that example is representative land of eighty thousand square feet of impervious area. We would use the two thousand square foot billing unit divided into eighty, it's forty billing units. But you also see in that gray box a little white circle and that represents a stormwater feature that the property owner is invested in maintaining that must by the requirements of the township ensure that over the long term, that facility is well maintained. And so one of those policy flexibilities in user fees allows you to credit, acknowledge that contribution to managing stormwater that is then calculated as a reduction of the bill that's owed owed for those properties. When we look at the fixed billing unit, it's simply math. It's a thousand square feet is the billing unit actually that we did consider for the evaluation in Ferguson. In this case, you have a house, that same house that was one billing unit under the equivalent residential approach becomes two billing units. And the eighty thousand square foot property becomes eighty thousand billing units with the credit option available to them. So you can see that in one case, we take So you can see that in one case, we take all parcels in the community and equate them to. The median residential property. In the second case of a fixed billing unit, it's regardless of land use. Everyone is basically treated on the same square foot basis. So let's go to the next slide. So why choose one over the other? And again, this recommend, this, this decision is not made. This is. Feedback time. This is an opportunity to get. Feedback again from the advisory committee when we meet with them in July. As well as any feedback you might provide as someone who's listening to all of this. The benefits really of the, of the equivalent residential unit. Is that if. You have a home and you build a new garage and add. You know, maybe another. Thousand square feet of area, a new driveway attaching to it and. There's no change in your billing units under the equivalent residential approach because all single family detached residential is one. There is some perceived inequity of the balance. Because again, you've got smaller properties with less impervious area paying the same thing as larger properties with more impervious area. So the concept of a potential inequity. Certainly is, is baked into that. Can we deal with it? Yes, we can evaluate all those single family homes and we can create billing tiers. Variations in that single family charge. That again is a politics, policy decision that would need to be made. The administrative oversight is basically the same regardless of which billing approach you take. There, the township again has great data on a parcel by parcel basis. It is already in place. They've already invested in this for more than just consideration of this fee. That, that data is really great to have for other public works. And planning purposes. So it serves more than this particular effort. But it does then provide the resources that really allows you to. Analyze properties on a, on a basis of. Of individual activity on that. So the concept of equity and fairness is perceived to be. Improved in the sense or different than under the fixed billing unit because it's not based on the land activity. So let's go a little further into this, Dave. Now it's Virginia's turn, correct?
Yes, thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
Right, so now that Elizabeth has spent some time. Discussing the overall program, how the study and the potential user fee were evaluated. We're going to talk a little bit about the specific cost model for Ferguson. Next slide, please. So the priorities of the staff and the stormwater advisory committee were used to establish the program. And then develop the cost model for the proposed stormwater fee. A few of these decisions led to some financial assumptions about the program. The first is that the priority of the staff and the advisory committee is to complete a system wide assessment of infrastructure. Elizabeth talked a little bit about this before. This will allow the township to, to determine the current status. Of the system and then develop a prioritization program for repairs, replacement and maintenance. It was assumed that this task would be completed with contractors and interns. The leadership of the stormwater program will remain the same with the public works and township engineer. Capital investments will be driven initially by projects in the adopted capital improvement plan. MS four compliance is a priority to the advisory committee and the township. And finally, we evaluated different types of staffing such as interns. That could complete valuable and cost effective system inspection and data gathering efforts. So after developing this initial program costs, next slide. Next slide, please, Dave. After developing this initial program costs, the initial rates were established. Since the final stormwater program is still under development. With the township and the advisory committee. I do want to note that final input from the public stormwater advisory committee and township staff. Is required before a program recommendation is made to the board of supervisors. The proposed annual rates showed on the screen. Are in a comfortable range for the proposed stormwater fee. As you recall, this is a two element rate structure. With all properties paying an equal portion of the baseline services. And a portion of the infrastructure management costs depending on the growth area boundary. There are two columns here, one for the SFDR billing unit. And one for the proposed one thousand square foot billing unit. Greater detail will be provided at the presentation at the board of supervisors meeting.
And so single family detached residential is referring to the use of the equivalent residential unit.
Correct.
Versus the charge for a thousand square feet of impervious area. Sorry, Virginia, didn't mean.
That's okay. So it's on an annual basis, the range for a single family residential unit. In the growth area would likely be potentially be proposed to be between sixty and seventy dollars. While the charge per billing unit for the non-growth area range is approximately thirty to forty dollars. In order to determine the price for a, an average single family home in Ferguson Township under the one thousand square foot billing unit. You would need to know the total impervious cover on your property. But at a billing unit rate that's approximately thirty to forty dollars per one thousand square feet in the growth area. And ten to twenty dollars per one thousand square feet in the non-growth area. And with that, we can move on to the next slide. So the next steps of this project study include the final SAC meeting on July fifteenth. Which would then be followed by a board of supervisors meeting summarizing the outcomes of phase two of the study. And with that, I think we have some time for some questions and answers.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it back here and I'm gonna leave my presentation mode up. Thank you, Virginia and Elizabeth, and I see some questions are rolling in, but before we get to those, I'd like to. Take a moment to address the questions that are. Were submitted in advance of this meeting and we've compiled them and then worked them into the presentation, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to those right now and then. I'll, I'll kind of read and maybe expand on the responses a bit, but then I'll also call on some of my. Panelists here to do the same. And in the meantime, if you have any questions. You know, feel free to, of course, engage through the group chat and I'm also. Monitoring my email to see if any questions are coming in by phone. It looks like we haven't received any just yet, but. So moving on to the first question. Okay, so you know, just a note again to reiterate, we will be. Addressing any specific questions that were submitted for individual properties. You know, at a later time with direct contact with those residents where we have contact information available. We'll, we'll, we'll reach out and, and follow up. First question, will all property owners be assessed a fee? The answer to that is yes. I think. You know, Virginia and Elizabeth both did a good job sort of outlining how that proposed fee structure may take shape. But you know, the, the critical piece of this is that all property owners would be assessed a fee. That includes. Tax exempt organizations and properties like the township itself. Like PennDOT, the Department of Transportation, so state roads, like Penn State University. Right now, all university owned properties that are tax exempt. Aren't contributing at least directly to the township's stormwater management obligations. So. You know, the truthful answer to that is yes, whether you're tax exempt or, or, or not. You would be obligated under this fee to, to pay based on your impact or your, your equivalent runoff units. Did, before I move on from that, did any of the other panelists want to expand on any of my response? Pretty straightforward question, so I'll move on.
To say, Dave, just one point. The PennDOT. I can at least say is taken a pretty negative view of. Having to pay local fees and, and so there are some legal actions around the state that will hopefully help clarify their responsibility.
Yeah, that's a good point. So you know, some of these tax exempt, you know, organizations, maybe even Penn State University. You know, we have to, and you know, other institutions of higher learning. You know, there's ongoing, be it litigation or review of these programs and whether or not they would apply, but our position right now. Is that this would apply to all properties regardless of taxable status. Are these services part, already part of annual property taxes? You know, the answer that's written here says, yes, the stormwater management program is funded. By the general fund, meaning that income and earned income tax, which is our largest single source of revenue. Is a primary funding vehicle for our stormwater obligations. You know, which in and of itself should give you some insight as to why the board has elected. To consider this because there's no frankly correlation between. What your earned income tax is and your contribution to the stormwater problem. So this provides an opportunity or a mechanism, if you will, to more directly. You know, relate the way that you're paying for those to the problem that we're attempting to address and resolve. And then again, the goal of the study is to shift the funding mechanism to distribute costs in alignment. With the demand for the public sys, uh, system as well as to address our predicted. Future needs to maintain and repair and replace our infrastructure. Dave, Ron, do you have anything you want to add or, or Virginia or Elizabeth?
Okay.
Uh, my homeowners association collects a fee specifically for stormwater management. This is a common question and concern that we've heard throughout our process. How will this affect my HOA fee? Will the township take over private BMPs? You know, there is a, there is a response here that talks about common areas, a clubhouse, a tennis court. The HOA would be charged directly for that impervious or hardened surface. There are opportunities for partnerships between the homeowners or condo associations with the township to. You know, make improvements to their stormwater management facilities. Especially those that may accept public runoff from upstream development or from township roads and right of way. And then, you know, again, credits, any credits that are eligible, meaning if your homeowners association is responsible for the maintenance. Of a stormwater management facility or detention basin, you know, there's a, that, one of the, the conceivable credits in this program that's being proposed. Would provide you with a reduction in your fee based on your, your efforts to mitigate your runoff. Again, I'll, I'll open it up to the panelists to add anything to my, to that response. Okay. Eventually, I'm just gonna start calling on you. It's not gonna be.
No, that's okay, Dave. I, I would like to just amplify a little bit on what the advisory committee worked with us on in this area to look at. Policy where you have public. Owned system crossing private property in an HOA or in a business setting. And considerable discussion was undertaken on what is the township's obligation and responsibility to those private owners? And so there is some additional policy consideration that will be brought to the board that would. Take into consideration the township's responsibility to partner with those private landowners. Should there be a system failure, a need for improvement, replacement? So that's the basis behind that concept of partnering. I just wanted to add some amplification there.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a good point. Let's move on to the next question if there's nothing more on that. Is the stormwater, this is another commonly asked question that we've seen throughout this process. And one that doesn't have any narrative under the slide because it's a, you know, it's. Kind of a complex issue to respond, but it says, the stormwater becoming an issue in the township because of new development? And the answer to that, of course, is yes and no. Meaning that. Certainly as new developments are built out, an additional impervious area is added. You know, in, in the public infrastructure and public maintenance responsibilities, public domain. There is going to be added cost burden that's absorbed through the general tax base and at least under the current structure. Meaning that, you know, we're, we're adding more responsibility areas that had previously been porous or pervious because they were undeveloped. As they get developed, there's stormwater management needs that accompany that. The other side of that, though, is worth noting is that new development complies typically with. Our new stormwater management regulations. So you find those developments oftentimes have much more advanced infrastructure. That mitigate and manages their stormwater, their runoff. So I'll, I'll look to Ron. Or Dave to add a little bit to my, to my answer there and cover anything that I've omitted, but. You know, certainly the answer to that is, you know, yes, in some respects, it does. Cause more of a stormwater management issue, but also some of the older, more aging infrastructure. Some of our older developments that weren't built. You know, maybe considerate of current. Needs, current conditions, meaning the more precipitation that we get throughout year, the more rain events we get year by year. Maybe they're not designed to handle that volume of runoff. Those often become more costly, more expensive to maintain and repair and replace. Than what we see with our newer developments. But Ron, Dave, you have anything to build on that?
So, yeah, this is Dave Modricar. Thanks, Dave. I agree with your response to add to it. So yes, stormwater. Because development is an issue, but also older. Development is for the reason that you mentioned that some of this. Developments old enough that it was built prior to the enactment of stormwater ordinances. So there's little runoff control. Or ordinance typically controls the rate of runoff, not the total amount of runoff. So that volume continues to increase. And it increases and goes to a system that's an aging infrastructure. So as new development is brought online, it adds to the number of structures, the amount of infrastructure that needs to be maintained. So when a new development's built, it may mean that roads are added. And when roads are added, inlets are added, and when inlets are added, stormpipe and curb are added. So it's just, it's just, you know, a continuation of adding to the infrastructure. Other issues that you could consider would be, you know, climate change, or you could call it an increase in the duration and intensity of storms. So our stormwater ordinance, you know, has changed over the years to try to. Keep up with hydraulic hydrologic changes in modeling, but I think we've noticed. Increased duration and intensity of storms has become an issue. So in the public works. Industry, industry, we often use the term resiliency. To talk about the way that we want to try to build up and maintain infrastructure. To combat and handle those types of changes.
Thank you, Dave. Good points. Anybody else have anything you want to add?
The only thing I would say is just kind of like, there's a couple of key words in that question. One is becoming. And the other one is new. I think stormwater has always been an issue in the township. I don't think it's just becoming an issue. I think it's becoming more complex, but we've always had to deal with stormwater. And essentially, we've had to deal with stormwater because of development, not just new development, any development. If the center region had never developed, there would likely not be many concerns with stormwater. So it's, it's accumulation. It's a culmination of all the development in the township.
Another good point. Thank you. All right, so we will move on to the next question here that was submitted in advance of the meeting tonight. And Ferguson Township has a higher tax rate than the average in Pennsylvania. Why is the township looking to propose an additional tax? I noted a similar question that I saw in the group chat earlier. Will taxes be reduced with this fee? So just to kind of cover some of these, these items. I, I think we touched on why the board has directed us to consider. This analysis and to look at this stormwater fee. You know, as a, as a potential revenue source to offset our, our stormwater management obligation. So I won't. Spend much time responding directly to. spend much time responding directly to that. The stormwater user fee must be used to provide a dedicated fund for stormwater management, and that's important to note because you know, as compared to the general fund or even our other governmental funds, if you, you know, go through our budget, you know that they're not, with a few exceptions, our our streetlight fund and our hydrant fund are examples of that are applicable for a broad variety of projects and uses. So, you know, in our general fund, you'll find everything from salaries and wages to engineering, you know, to, you know, printing costs and office supplies. Whereas this proposed fee would be only specifically obligated to stormwater management. And that will become part of its own separate fund, meaning the revenue that we generate through this fee would be deposited solely in that fund. And it would also be subject to audit, you know, on an annual basis, like all of our municipal expenditures. So, you know, our auditor would ensure that the funds that we are depositing in that stormwater management fund is are being used for appropriate expenditures. And that'll be reported, so it'll be transparent and and accountable to the public. So you'll know that the the fees that are being used for this will be used for what their intended purposes. Revenue includes both current and new services. So, you know, it begs the question, you know, what what is what is it that we're doing that's insufficient right now? And, you know, maybe that'll be a good question. I can turn to, you know, the consultants and other staff that specialize in this here to talk a little bit just briefly about, you know, why would we be considering doing more than what we've done historically in the township? What's the need for building on that program now?
Well, I can take part of that. I talked about that in the earlier part of the presentation that you have an aging infrastructure that at this point you don't have really a good handle on its overall condition. You know, anecdotally, you know where problems are popping up, but a comprehensive evaluation and we propose that that be accomplished over a number of years. It's not to rush out and answer all the questions in one year because you have a very extensive system. So it's not just the pipes. It's obviously your roadside dishes, ditches and crosspipes. It's the inlets. It's the condition of basins. It's your full movement of water through channels, channels running in people's backyard. There's a whole variety of infrastructure that has been underserved and you're starting to see occur the failure of those system components. That example on Martin Street of the corrugated metal pipe is is frightening to see, and it's happening again through corrugated metal pipe replacement programs all over, all over the state, all over the country. Because those materials simply cannot withstand the years of use and they begin to fail, the bottoms rot out. You need to get your arms around that before you get a collapse, a roadway collapses, someone's backyard collapses because you're not able to get in and respond to those things. So you have this very valuable infrastructure that's simply been underserved. It's often out of sight, out of mind. People typically don't think about it until something interferes with their life. It's also important to recognize that the one of the important roles of this infrastructure is the protection of private property as well as the public property, but but certainly to be able to reduce the impacts of emergency events. And those emergency events these days seem to be happening more and more. The intensity of storms are changing. The frequency of storms are changing. All of this puts increased pressure on what is already a system that is being underserved. So that just a general overview and I'm I know both Ron and and.
Yeah, we we've done a good job historically of assessing and prioritizing road transportation projects, traffic signals, those types of assets. We're getting better with, you know, our street trees. It wasn't about a few years ago, maybe five years ago, when we really started to pay attention to video and assessing the condition of our underground system before we put a lot of capital expenditure into the above ground system. And some of that came to light on Westerly Parkway, most notably on Martin Street. You saw some of those photographs. And so we do make a concerted effort to assess the condition of our underground infrastructure that's aging before we put a huge investment on what's above. The other thing that I I think there's a need for that we could do better at is responding to resident requests and concerns about stormwater matters. So we we do get to those. We do have a backlog of them. Backlot systems don't get a whole lot of attention. Any road that you think of in a neighborhood that has a cul-de-sac and it's sloped down, that water goes somewhere and usually that somewhere is through a backlot pipe system between people's yards that over the years needs attention. So we have a, you know, a backlog of that. And also the ability to partner with associations, businesses that have systems that the stormwater might flow from the public, then go on to a public, private system, then back out to the public. So those private entities are entirely responsible for those systems, but sometimes the least equipped to actually handle the maintenance and repairs.
I'll just tack on a couple more thoughts to that if I can, just take a couple minutes here. One thing that it sticks in my mind, and this is going back a while, you show your age, but in the eighties and the nineties, Ferguson Township experienced a lot of growth. And Elizabeth mentioned earlier about our failing infrastructure and that 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 period of time is when we had a lot of that corrugated metal pipe installed and unfortunately, it's it's basically getting toward its end of life, where it's 20 to 30 years old. And that's about what the design life for that type of material is. So we're seeing a rapid deterioration of that type of pipes infrastructure. And that's about half of the pipe material we have in the ground in the street. So that's one area that I think, as I think about where are things changing more recently and why? That's a big area, I think, that we're seeing a need in the township to address. The other area, it was mentioned earlier that NPDs permit, the National Pollutant Discharge Liberation System permit that we get from DEP, which is really targeted at improving water quality. And this is, as Elizabeth mentioned, something that started back in 2003. But the program has been changing. We get a new permit from DEP every five years. And as you can imagine, the requirements increase just about every time we get a permit update. Most recently, the thing that we've had to start to address is coming up with plans as how we're going to reduce pollutant loadings to the streams in our area as well as to the Chesapeake Bay. And and those require capital investment to come up with things like stream restoration projects or revisions to what might have been a detention basin to make it an infiltration basin to capture and infiltrate that water or ways to treat it from a water quality perspective, things that prior to 2003 were not even thought of or done in our region. So those can be expensive projects. The one of those projects that we have in design right now, you know, the construction estimate alone is one and a half million dollars. And then on top of that, you have the design permitting right away utility relocation. So the costs on these projects can add up pretty quickly. And we really don't have a lot of option in that. We need to complete these projects to comply with our permit. So so if I had to characterize two significant areas that I've seen in my time that have changed a lot, is is be those two, the corrugated metal pipes failing, end of life, and then having to address the requirements of our MS four permit.
Thank you, Ron, and thank you, Dave, and thank you, Elizabeth, for for building on the this response. One thing that I'd like to just touch on is this concept of revenue neutrality and it speaks to this question, will taxes be reduced along with this fee? The short answer is it would not be recommended. Now, again, I just want to reiterate before I respond that it's not our purpose here to advocate or defend this proposed stormwater fee. We're simply providing our our details and our observations and our analysis that that's been conducted thus far. It's up to the elected officials who are responsible for policy setting and decision making to decide whether this is in the best interest of the township. But as a as manager, it would be my recommendation that it not be accompanied with a reduction in taxes or any kind of net neutral fee structure. And the reason I say that is because, and we have data to support this that's available on the website. Our projections are, as Elizabeth illustrated earlier, that our fees are going to continue to increase regardless of how we decide to address them and how we fund them. This means that we're going to be looking to deplete our fund balances, either raise general taxes or cut expenditures. And frankly, you know, as as difficult and complex as government at all levels can be, conceptually raising additional revenue is fairly straightforward. We have limited options. One of those is to grow and expand our tax base. One of those is to raise taxes, which nobody is in favor of, including myself. One of those is to cut expenditures or to find new ways to more equitably assign cost. The current system that we have in place, I think you can argue for or against this fee for various reasons, but I think you certainly argue that the the current system in place is not equitable. Meaning that you can have, even if you look at property taxes alone and you charge property owners based on their assessed value, which is what your property taxes is determined by, you can have a high assessed value, but relatively low impervious area, or maybe you're not contributing, you know, you don't have a lot of runoff that you're generating as as a result of that impervious area, or maybe you have a lot of things that you're doing to manage your stormwater on your own property. Right now, our system is not considerate of that. And so there there are winners and losers, so to speak, under the current model that this would help to address and make a more equitable or could help to address and make a more equitable fee structure. So, you know, reducing taxes to make it a net neutral program doesn't gain much for the needs of the township because our expenditures, as you can see by looking at the resources on the website, not just stormwater related, mind you. I mean, if you look at our trending for our expenditures over the years, there's a steady increase. Costs go up, not just for things that we're doing that we weren't doing before, but the costs of all of our public service delivery is increasing. And again, that's some of that's attributable to growth. Some of it's attributable to simply the cost of doing business and all of our, all of our costs are increasing, even in our own personal experiences. So in order to account for that, we're trying to look ahead five, 10, 15 years out and start to make some decisions now or recommend some policies adjustments and some programs such as this that we can be alert for those such that so so that we're not playing catch up. It's a lot easier to look forward and say, okay, we've got these unfunded liabilities five, 10 years out, in addition to what we have right now. Let's proactively strategize and have a community discussion about how we might best address those and how we might best fund those. Because by the time the problems get here, it's too late. You know, we're we're not going to be able to turn back the clock and be proactive, be preventative. You know, we're going to be in a position where we have to make some very difficult decisions in order to ensure our financial solvency and our strength as a municipality and strength as fund and strength in our fund balances, but also to accommodate our growing needs. So the concept of of revenue neutrality is not something that I would really be supportive of. You know, for the reasons that I've described, and also because you we wouldn't make that up. It would be it would be disingenuous or it would be misleading if we said, okay, we're going to reduce your property taxes in 2021 to account for the stormwater fee. But then in two years' time, when our fund balances are threatened, we turn around and raise property tax or we, you know, we have an earned income tax increase of a certain mileage. It wouldn't be fair to the taxpayer and it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't be an honest presentation of the problem that we're trying to to deal with, that we have to deal with right now. I'm going to move on to the next question. Will, what will be the penalty? What will the penalty be rather? And who will this penalty be applied to if money connected for stormwater is used for other purposes? So, you know, I I touched on this before. You know, the oversight of the township budget is with the Board of Supervisors and myself as the township manager. The Finance Director is also, of course, closely involved with the expenditure of township funds. But this would be a ordinance that describes the intended use of these funds, and that would be subject to an annual audit, much like the rest of our books. So, you know, as the auditor is going through our expenditures for the previous fiscal year, they're looking to make sure that the monies that are collected to be transferred into this fund are being spent in accordance with the intention of the fund. So, you know, any, you know, misuse or misappropriation of municipal funds relative to the stormwater fee would show up as a finding in the audit and there would be, you know, repercussions for, you know, the municipality if we are not compliant with our accounting standards and what we've we've you know, set forth with the purpose and intent of the use of this fund. Does anybody have anything to build on that? I think that's kind of a straightforward question with a straightforward response. I'll jump to the next question here. What will the next fee be? What are the next steps in moving this fee forward? I I don't, I don't think that there's a, there's a next fee answer that I can give that has any, you know, specific or, you know, specificity or specific detail involved with it. There's, as is indicated in the narrative here, no other fees that are, you know, actively under consideration at this time. You know, our revenue and our strength of our fund balance is evaluated year to year. And we've been very fortunate as a municipality in terms of our solvency and the strength of those fund balances. I think there is some very real threats to that that you can see in the projections that we have for our stormwater management obligations for this application, but all of our expenditures is a municipality. And I encourage you all to to take a look at our budget documents, our executive summary, as well as the resources that are available on the website relative to the stormwater fee. And, you know, do draw your own conclusions about our financial position and the kinds of things that we will likely be faced with. You know, in in the upcoming years, even continuing just to provide services at the level that folks are accustomed to and have come to expect. Meaning I'm not talking about adding to those services or adding to, you know, additional items that we're looking to provide or deliver on. The next steps in moving this fee forward would be, as described earlier, we're going to continue with public education and outreach. We're moving towards a recommendation from the Stormwater Advisory Committee to the Board of Supervisors and a public presentation sometime in the early fall. And then the enactment of the ordinance would be structured, if approved by the board, such that it would be done in enough time for homeowners associations, primarily in condo associations, to update their fee, their fees assessed for the upcoming fiscal year so that they can appropriately respond to that. But for the property owners that, you know, individual property owners, you would see this go out with your tax with your tax bill. So that would be, you know, roughly in in the early spring of 2021, if that ordinance is enacted and if it's in effect as of 2021. And I'll touch on that in a bit. So anything that I missed on that to the panelists? Okay. Just going to keep rolling right ahead here. How can property owners reduce their fee? How will existing stormwater best management practices, such as a French drain or a retention basin, be considered in the fee? So there's some general description of what a credit program might look like, but I'll turn it over to Elizabeth or the other panelists to expound on that a little bit and describe, excuse me, how that credit program may be presented in addition to what you've already discussed in the presentation.
Well, you see a list there of certain kinds of activities that we've reviewed with the advisory committee and staff of the kinds of behaviors or systems that are available to help partner with the operation that the township has and that the crediting program would look at contributions that have been made, investments that have been made in things like doing groundwater recharge where there is no direct discharge, it's actually being placed underground. Where basins are located, what condition they're in, are they being well maintained? Are there green infrastructure facilities, green infrastructure is the softer approach to managing stormwater. A lot of, again, infiltration, re-greening of areas that allow for an improved water quality. We have a number of agricultural best management practices that are in the discussion background paper. Public education and outreach. Organizations that are committed to extending the knowledge base, perhaps to. Organizations that are committed to extending the knowledge base, perhaps to their employees, on what stormwater is all about, how to be good stewards, how to help reduce the incidence of pollution. And this policy is, is under consideration. It has a number of features that would address activities like this, that would allow a variation of reduction of fees, depending on the final policy decisions of the board. I don't know, Ron or Dave, Virginia, if you wish to add any additional comments to that?
The topic of credits has been a a matter of great deal of discussion with staff, the consultant and the advisory committee. And I know that there's not enough time to give it justice in this forum, but those that would like to can follow up with us, and there's information on the website. There's a wealth of information on the website, and at the last advisory committee meeting in particular, you know, there was a table put together with different percentages and types of credits for various activities, all of which is still under development.
You did. Thank you, Elizabeth. All right, moving on to the next question here, and I think we've only got a couple more that have been submitted in advance. What services or benefits will be provided for a property that is being charged a stormwater fee? And so there's some, there's some description here, reduced impact of development on water quality, extend the life of infrastructure, protection of public and private property, such as the middle, through the mitigation of flooding, increased ability to provide technical assistance and solve problems, or what I'll call maybe proactive stormwater management strategies. And then, of course, there's our increase in costs associated with compliance with our state and federal mandates, which is only, you know, growing through each permit cycle. Ron, Dave, do you want to build on that? Okay, Elizabeth, do you have anything you want to add to that? Response?
No, I'm good. I think, I think the industry, again, across the North American local governments is recognizing the importance of sustainability, of creating an infrastructure that's resilient, that will last longer than perhaps what its engineering design is intended for. So it, it's really looking at this as a utility, as an important investment in infrastructure. And the benefit to the overall community is a longer sustained life of this infrastructure, protection of property, again, improved water quality, improved, though it sounds maybe a little hokey, but quality of life by being able to manage this resource and, and being able to maintain this infrastructure.
Thank you. That was very well said, and it's an excellent point. And it's the direction that we're trying to head as a community. You know, again, kind of irrespective of this fee discussion, to provide that, you know, sustainable level of infrastructure, because it's a lot more costly for us to go in and try to mitigate damage done. You know, a, a stormpipe that's failed and caused flooding, or it was underdesigned and can't handle new precipitation events, new rain events, than it is to take a more proactive stance. So while, you know, the injection of, of money in the onset to, you know, catch up, so to speak, may be significant, over time, the efficiency and the length of, of, you know, the lengthening of the, the life of some of our public amenities that manage stormwater should reduce that cost to maintain, you know, in the long run. So, good point there. Will, will we be charged, I guess, if we have sidewalks on our property? The answer to that is sidewalks are considered part of the public right of way, and they're not covered in, as, as, they're not included in the calculations of impervious surface. If you have something that is internal to your development, so if you have a, you know, homeowners association or a parking lot or something like that, that is something that is included in the calculation, that impervious area, common impervious area is included in your calculation when we're determining the ERU or the billing unit that we would assess. That pretty straightforward? Anybody have anything to add?
No, I, I think you captured that pretty well there. The other thing, I'll just clarify, two of those not in this one about sidewalks, but essentially anything in the right of way, we've, we've clipped out of and not assessed to individual parcels when we did the, the quantification of the impervious areas. So that even includes the portion of the driveway that is in the right of way, you know, from the edge of the road to where your property actually starts. So even that has been excluded. It's only those components that were impervious that are on within the property lines that were included.
Okay, thank you. How much of the, how much of the general fund is appropriated yearly and where will those funds go if this fee is approved? So some of that is, you know, addressed here, and, and you could see, as Elizabeth alluded to earlier, for about, just about $400,000 is our overall stormwater management obligation under the general fund. We also have our Transportation Improvement Fund, or our TIF, as we commonly refer to, which is, I think it was characterized earlier in the presentation as a dedicated tax. I, I wouldn't classify it as a dedicated tax. Instead, I would classify it as a portion of our tax revenue that's been earmarked essentially, or dedicated in that respect to go to transportation projects, meaning there's a resolution that's established, the Board of Supervisors, that says X percent of earned income tower, real estate tax, real estate transfer tax, earned income tax will be distributed yearly into the Transportation Improvement Fund. And that fund, as it's appropriately named, is solely designed for transportation improvements, but quite a bit of that, to the tune of just over half a million dollars or $569,000 is for management of our stormwater infrastructure, our pipes and our inlets and things like that. So, you know, that's where that approximately million dollar figure is derived from, as far as our annual obligation. And that would be what the current fund would be, or current program would be funded under this presented program. You know, and, and I think, you know, I've, I've described a little bit about where will those funds go if the fee is approved. You know, frankly, you know, our, our costs on a year to year are, are increasing dramatically. You know, certainly salary, benefits, other things that are related to personnel and the management of the organization is a cost driver. Our capital improvements, our road projects, that's a big, big piece of what we do year to year. Park improvement projects, I mean, just, you know, kind of go through the budget and look at the trending over the last couple of years. And it should become pretty apparent quickly that that line is going up, whereas upward, as is true for all, just about all municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. Yeah, go ahead.
No, just a clarifying comment that I believe some of the funding in the second bullet is also intended for some pipe improvements, not under roads that are being paved this year, so what I might call neighborhood type improvements.
Thanks, Dave. Good point. How soon will we find out what our fee is? I think there was a slide that, you know, detailed what that proposed fee structure might look like. But ultimately, the ordinance, if enacted, will include the details of what that fee assessment would, you know, would entail. So, you know, it's, it's hard to speak, you know, in, in exact detail about what that fee might look like beyond what Virginia, you know, presented a little bit earlier this evening, but you know, you can get a little bit better of a sense of what your fee might look like, at least as proposed, under what model is under consideration. And of course, you'd have to consider, you know, reducing from that any credits that a, a property owner may be eligible. So if you're a single family property owner that's located inside the regional growth boundary, you'll have, you know, your baseline equivalent runoff unit ERU, or whatever your, your billing unit is that's assigned, ultimately decided by the board. From that, you will deduct credits that you may be eligible, such as, as we reviewed earlier, attendance at a rain barrel workshop, establishment of a rain garden, onsite stormwater management, and things like that. Is there any detail that the panelists want to provide to build on that that we didn't cover?
The only thing I would add to that, Dave, is that should the board make that decision, and we know what the final rate structure looks like, one of the things that we immediately work through then is the calculation charge per property. And, and that can be made publicly available as soon as decisions are made and and consideration is given to the ultimate rate structure.
Thank you. Thank you for adding that. Okay, so that's the end of our questions that we received submitted in advance. I see we've got about 30 or so questions that have appeared in the Q and A, so I'm going to, I'm going to hit those first and then I'll bounce over to the chat where some of you have, have entered questions and comments. And we'll try to make our way through all these. I think some of these are a little bit redundant, so where we may have addressed them earlier in the interest of time, you know, we may, we may pass over rather quickly, but we'll, we'll touch on everything here. And I'm going to copy these questions here, and then we will format them with some general responses, as well as what we provided in the presentation. We'll make those available on the website. Of course, we won't, you know, attribute them to any direct individuals or names. We'll keep it, we'll keep it anonymous. So speaking of anonymous, the first question comes from anonymous attendee. It says, how does the stormwater fee work? If we don't get rain, do we still pay a fee? What if we have a nice gentle rain and there's no runoff? I think that, you know, the, the short answer to that is, you know, that the, the fee is irrespective or not considerate of year to year precipitation in the, in the micro level. Certainly at the macro level it is, because that's how we design our infrastructure to manage those hundred year storm events or 1% storm events that are becoming more and more prevalent as we see year to year and as our models are predicting. So, you know, yes, you, it would, it would not fluctuate year to year based on precipitation. It would be a set fee that would be based on the variables that we've already described. I'll pause for any additions or additional comments. Want to touch on this one a bit. This is also from anonymous attendee. It's a good observation. It's something that we've given some thought to. Says, there are many senior citizens who are barely making ends meet now, and with COVID-19, many have lost their jobs and businesses. This is going to be a big setback for them. Has any thought been given to these people? I mean, we certainly have as we proceeded through, and, you know, once again, and I hate to sound like a broken record, but not here to defend or advocate for this fee. I'm simply here to provide, you know, information, as are the other panelists and respond to questions. But yes, absolutely. You know, income and, and hitting that, you know, correct fee based on what we think is going to be, you know, most easily absorbed, and I don't mean to say easily absorbed, but most easily absorbed by a majority of our residents, was, you know, paramount in our consideration of this project. Meaning, you know, we knew that if we were to come at the board and suggest that this fee be, you know, $500 per year, just to pick a, an exorbitant number per residential unit, that, you know, that wasn't going to fly. I mean, I'm a, I'm a resident here too. I would be first in line. You know, you know, advocating against that. But we had to find a fee structure that made sense based on our current and future projected needs. And that's, you know, essentially, and also is consistent with what you find throughout, you know, other communities that have enacted this fee, particularly in the state, and particularly in our region of the state. So that was a challenge and something that I can assure you, the Stormwater Advisory Committee, our staff and consultants have taken very much to heart in their analysis. And we absolutely have not only deferred items or structured our long-term investments to be respectful of that and be understanding of that, but we're also prepared and understanding that even with the implementation of the fee in an effort to keep that fee manageable for residents and property owners, we will likely be supplementing that from the general fund, meaning we won't be able to cover all of our expenditures with the proposed fee. We might have to add to that transfers out of the general fund and into that stormwater fee, so that we can keep it, you know, manageable for folks. The credit program might help make that manageable for folks. And the other, you know, the, the other point on the pandemic, you know, certainly, as you can imagine, we didn't embark on this three years ago thinking that we would be where we are today, you know, with our economic conditions, with the, you know, environmental conditions that we're facing relative to the pandemic. And, you know, the, the issues that many of us are facing with our income and our take home pay. One of the potential developments in response to that could be, and, and, you know, again, I'm not advocating for or against this, that the board considers the enactment of the ordinance in this year with a deferral of the effective date of the program to 2022, to a future program year. You know, the, the value there would be, would give people a time to, you know, appropriately prepare, to budget for, you know, the additional cost. And, and also your rebound from any, hopefully from any long-term or financial impacts that they may feel as a result of the pandemic or other economic conditions. But the value of having this ordinance in front of this board, you know, in addition to this is the charge that we've been given as staff, is as you can imagine, I mean, we've covered a tremendous amount of ground in a short time here. It's a steep learning curve for, you know, elected officials, for Stormwater Advisory Committee members, for staff and consultants to catch up to. So, you know, we want to be able to provide that information to educate and then have the board make that educated decision and not setting us back a great deal, because there's a cost associated with this educational process. Elizabeth is great at what she does, but she's not doing it for free. So we need to, you know, make sure that we're sensitive to that, and we want to not act foolishly or without, you know, regard for these considerations, but understanding that we, we want to save money and provide the board, this board, with an opportunity to make this decision, even if that program itself is not implemented until an upcoming fiscal year. So, you know, again, I'm, I'm not saying that that's going to be the way this takes shape, if it does take shape, but that is a possibility so that we can be sensitive to some of those cost impacts. You know, but ultimately, you know, is one year enough? Maybe, maybe not. You know, we need to be mindful of where we're setting that fee so that it is manageable and that, you know, it's, it is absorbable, particularly for those that are on fixed incomes, or that may have been, you know, directly impacted as a result of the pandemic or other conditions. Anybody have anything you want to expand on? Okay. Next question is, the vast majority of stormwater comes from city and state property, roads and, and properties, surrounding townships, agriculture and commercial properties. Why would residents of Ferguson share more than their burden when we already have the highest taxes and fees in the state? You know, that last clause is kind of a value judgment. I disagree that we have the, that we have the largest taxes and fees in the state. But I, I get the, the, the nature of the question. And I would argue at least, and again, not to advocate, but I would argue that this proposed structure, for reasons that we've got into in this presentation, is actually more equitable, more considerate of those impacts. Meaning those that contribute more to the problem will pay more under this model, as opposed to what we are currently doing to manage stormwater. So I think that Elizabeth and staff and Virginia have done a good job describing that, but I'll pause in case there's anything you want to add or I missed.
Maybe just that, you know, all, all the stakeholder groups, we've tried to engage in the advisory committee process. And while, you know, agriculture and commercial properties are included, as well as residential properties, the roads that serve those residential properties, that as Ron mentioned, are snipped out. You know, Jason's indicated that, that there's a lot of stormwater that comes from. Those roads were built to serve residents and the communities that they serve.
Thank you, Dave. That's a, that's a good point. And, and, you know, again, just to, to, you know, state one, once more, that even Ferguson Township as a municipality, we would be paying our, a fee. So, you know, it's not that we're going to exempt ourselves from this, and, you know, it's so our, our, you know, cost obligations due to our impervious thumbprint would be assessed to the township on an annual basis. Next question is, what has been done to recover the expenditures caused by the nuisance created by stormwater runoff from Patton Township? Specifically, the expenditure of the stormwater drainage and maintenance that cuts through Park Hills Drive that currently exceeds $193,000. I'm going to ask some of the folks smarter than me on this, as panelists, to, to, to respond to this, maybe at the, the larger level and speak to, you know, runoff that we receive and treat from other neighboring municipalities and what consideration that's been given through this analysis. But, you know, we have done, I'll say, some, some modeling on this particular issue, and I don't want to get property specific, as I stated earlier. And we can demonstrate where that runoff is coming from, and I think Ron can correct me if I'm wrong. And we can demonstrate where that runoff is coming from. And I think Ron can correct me if I'm wrong, but a majority of the Park Hills Drainage Way runoff. Is not in fact coming from Patton Township. Some is, but not a majority of it. Is that, is that a fair statement, Ron, or?
Yeah, it's split. Uh, some is Ferguson and some is Patton. Um, there's a fair amount that comes from Patton Township. But there's also quite a bit that comes from that Park Hills neighborhood as well. So upstream of that is Park Forest Village. Uh, and the percentage breakdown, I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head.
That's okay, but can you talk a little bit about, um, you know, how that. Uh, upstream development and, and runoff created by other municipalities may be considered in this fee if there's been. Development.
Yes. Uh, so in essence, and Elizabeth's probably correct me if I'm wrong on this stuff, but in essence, each municipality is responsible for the stormwater that. That they have or they convey through the municipality, no different than Plant Leaves Ferguson Township and goes downstream to. The Borough or Harris Township, um, you know, they receive runoff from us. But they don't collect any revenues from us either. Each entity is, is charged and tasked with taking care of their infrastructure that, that they have. Patton Township, no different than Ferguson Township, also has storm systems that they have to maintain. They also have an MS four permit. That they have to comply with as well. So they have similar costs and expenses just as we do. Uh, and each municipality in essence has to take care of that infrastructure that we have, and, and that does include conveying upstream. Runoff. It just can't evaporate. It doesn't disappear at the border. It's just part of the responsibility of the municipality.
I will say particularly in response to the, the Park Hills Drainage Way issue, we are proactively seeking. You know, state and federal grant funding to assist in the, in the improvements there. So. You know, our hope is and we're confident that we'll be able to subsidize some of that expense through grant revenue. And not shift the burden entirely to the taxpayer or to this stormwater. Anybody else? Dave? Elizabeth?
I think the two of you covered it pretty well.
Okay. All right. So my friend, Mr. Hamilton asks, how would a user fee help to resolve stormwater issues in the Greenbrier development? Greenbrier was established in nineteen seventy-eight with ninety-four lots of at least one acre. At present, the community includes eighty-nine homes and five undeveloped lots. The present stormwater system involves drainage swales that empty into four sinkholes on private lands. There are about two miles of street. None have curbs. Problems include runoff issues on private properties and erosion of berms, especially in front of most mailboxes. So, um, you know, without getting too deep into the specifics, I'll, I'll just kind of. You know, stab at this one and then turn it over to Dave and Ron if they've got anything, uh, more to add, but. You know, a, a big component of the Stormwater Advisory Committee's discussions has been, how do we address these? Stormwater management facilities that treat both private runoff, meaning internal to the development. And public runoff coming from upstream sources or other developments. And, you know, the. I mean, there's, there's a number of ways that ultimately this could be handled. You know, on the one extreme, you have, you know, well, it's privately owned and maintained. It's your responsibility. If that's the case, as, as a homeowners association or whomever, a private property owner, you know, that's, that's on you. The other extreme being. That the municipality absorb, assumes all responsibility for the maintenance and upkeep and improvements to. Privately owned stormwater management facilities. There's a range of options in between and where the Stormwater Advisory Committee has. You know, really been settling on in terms of their recommendation has been kind of a cost share model. Meaning that based on the amount or the volume of runoff that's handled external to that development or to that privately owned property. We would, meaning municipality through this fee, contribute to improvements, maintenance and upkeep, capital improvements, repairs. Needed on those stormwater management facilities, again, based on the proportion of public runoff that it treats. So that's, uh, you know, again, details to be determined, but, and it's not maybe specifically addressing the, the question at hand and we can follow up. Jerry at a later time to get maybe in more specifics offline, but. That's what we've discussed as, as I recall, and I'll open it up to Dave, Ron, Elizabeth, Virginia with any additions.
Yeah, I think any private property owner or. HOA or commercial establishment that was interested in partnering with the township. On a project that involves co-mingled municipal and private stormwater would do that. Details of which are yet to be determined. Some funding of which, at least in the model, is set up in the, um, stormwater fee structure to handle a number of these projects.
The only other thing I wanted to point out in, in the comment was about the, uh, erosion in the berms. And the shoulders and, and that, that stuff is clearly in the right of way. And, and yes, that is part of the purpose of the fee. Um, and there's no intent that a homeowner association would maintain any of those. Public elements, but those aspects in the right of way that are drainage related. The stormwater fee could be used to help, uh, correct those issues.
Yeah, the shoulders, shoulders are on us whether we get to it with a stormwater fee or a transportation project.
Good point. Thank you. Thank you, Ron. Thank you, Dave. Uh, is there anything we missed on that? Move on to the next question here. Question is, uh, or, or statement is, I suppose. Tied into the question above, none of the fee structures mentioned addresses the actual burden of where the vast majority of stormwater comes from. Agriculture, commercial, city and state property. You know, I, I think we've, uh, alluded to this a little, you know, quite a bit in, in the presentation and, you know, even in recent responses to questions. That, you know, I think the, the intent of presenting this program would in fact be the exact opposite to, to address. The actual burden of where the vast majority of stormwater comes from and to assess those properties accordingly. Based on their contribution to the problem. It's, it's a complex conversation. It's a complex fee structure because. You know, and you, you talk about agriculture, you certainly have farm lots where they may have a significant amount of impervious area. In, you know, whether it be through some of their, uh, outbuildings and other structures, barns, et cetera. Where while they have impervious, it may, uh, some of it may make its way into public stormwater management. Facilities, but maybe not all of it does, or most of it doesn't. Most of it may get absorbed directly into the groundwater. So, you know, given our. Topography and the, um, really, uh, the tremendous value that we get from our groundwater recharge. In, uh, this area, you know, the argument can be made and has been made by a member of our Stormwater Advisory Committee. That we ought to be considerate of those unique, uh, soil characteristics that are more conducive to infiltration. As opposed to conveyance into stormwater management facilities. So as you can see, that conversation can get, you know, very complicated very quickly. The intent of the purpose of, or the intent of proposing this fee would be to propose a fee structure that is as considerate as it can be. Of the unique nature and characteristic of those properties while also providing a way that we can manage. And we can justify in terms of our assessment. So. That's my short response to that, but I think we've touched on it in, in, uh, previous questions as well as in the presentation itself. Anybody have anything you want to add to that? All right, seeing, uh, heads shaking. So, uh, great question, uh, here. Would fees be required on land parcels without a structure or impervious area? I'm gonna bounce that one to you, Elizabeth.
The answer, uh, based on the policy discussions that we've had to date is that land that is. Not pervy, impervious. Would not be charged the fee, that the meter, the allocation methodology is the presence of hardened surfaces.
Now, is that true, Elizabeth? There's a follow up to that for our baseline program costs like our MS four obligations. And other things that we've, you know, that are kind of in, not considerate of impervious area.
The, all of the costs at this point, Dave, under the, the policy that we've reviewed is. That vacant land is not charged.
Okay.
But again, it's an outstanding issue and. That would certainly, I think, be one of those things that we would definitely want good policy direction on. As to whether the baseline cost, the administrative cost should be, uh, there should be a contribution even if the land is vacant.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anybody else on that? Next question, uh, is, uh, starts, it was discussed the need to provide funds to maintain roadside swales and inlets. Will any liquid fuels funds provided by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation be used to pay for some of these features? And, you know, I, I believe and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Dave, but the answer to that is yes, we, uh, we do. Fund some of these kinds of improvements through our liquid fuels allocation. Whether that would continue to be the case, or we would use that liquid fuels fund to reduce some of our obligation under our transportation improvement fund. And then take some of those costs that are under liquid fuels and bring them under the umbrella of this program. I suppose that's something that we would be. Presenting, but Dave, do you want to speak to that? Cause maybe, maybe I might.
I'll just answer it a little different, different way.
Thank you.
Certainly the maintenance of roadside swales and inlets isn't, is an eligible cost for liquid fuels. Will it be used for that purpose? Is a different question. Currently, liquid fuels money is predominantly used to pay for road materials, stone, asphalt. We do buy pipe out of the liquid fuels, uh, program.
Road salt.
Micro-surfacing.
pavement markings.
Side rail repairs. That's where the liquid fuels money goes, but certainly it's eligible for more funding than actual funding that we have.
Thank you. That was a much better response than I was able to discuss. I should just punted right to you on that one. You know, I'll add too that, that our projections for our little fuels allocation, particularly in the next year or two are, are really. You know, concerning to us because, you know, this was one of those, those, um, you know, funding mechanisms or revenue mechanisms that. Was really affected by the pandemic and, and, you know, it's difficult to predict how that impact is going to. You know, whether it's gonna bounce back to, to our normal, uh, allocation, which is based on, on, is a formulaic calculation based on our, you know, road miles and. Et cetera. Or whether, you know, it's going to take a dip and, and never rebound. You know, is, is this new normal that we live in, so to speak, going to include a lot of additional remote work? Uh, arrangements where people aren't leaving their house as much, or maybe you're not going out as often as we used to for the foreseeable future until. You know, we get back to, to normal course and, and the allocable pool of liquid fuels money is gonna be severely impacted by that. So, you know, it's hard to tell right now what that might look like, but the expectation is that. We will not see the same kind of revenue in the short term and possibly even the, the, you know, intermediate and long term. Revenue from that liquid fuels fund. Let's go to, um. Okay, if a homeowner, and the next one here, if a homeowner has provisions to mitigate runoff from their property roof infiltration sums. Infiltration swales, rain gardens, barrels, et cetera. Would they still be assessed the entire amount of the impervious surface? Should individuals with these mitigation methods in place? Only be assessed on their portions of impervious that actually. Sheet flow or daylight to an area in or ultimately flowing to the public right of way stormwater management system. You know, I think we've, we've, uh, addressed that question a little bit with the description of the credit structure. But with the credit structure that is proposed, it is not so much that, you know, the property owner is expected to. You know, have an, a hydraulic analysis done or something detailed that says, hey, my, my rain garden. Treats this much impervious runoff and my rain barrel treats this much impervious. So, you know, the net of the impervious that discharges to the public infrastructure versus what I'm treating onsite is what my fee structure will be. It's, it's much more simplistic than that because, uh, and, and, you know, frankly, you know, would be cost prohibitive for some to take advantage of that credit. If they were obligated to perform that level of analysis. So instead, what's proposed is a percentage credit not to exceed. And, and this, uh, answers another question I think I saw somewhere else. Meaning that we would have a maximum credit that somebody, that we would recommend that somebody could take advantage of. You know, you couldn't take a hundred percent credit and not have any fee. You know, that credit may be capped at forty percent or fifty percent or whatever that number is set by the Board of Supervisors. Uh, on, on what a maximum that credit that an individual property or property owner can take advantage of. Any, anybody have, uh, anything to add to that response on the panel? What credit will property for stormwater being discharged onto private property, for instance, due to changes to roadways? You know, we, we touched on that a little bit. The cost sharing model that's been discussed by the Stormwater Advisory Committee, but there's also this credit program that. Would be eligible for, and the credit amount would be dependent on what. That, uh, stormwater management system might look like. Is it a basin? Is it a, you know, swale? Is it a rain guards or rainbow? So, I mean, those are the kinds of things that we need to be considerate of when presenting this credit program to the public and the Board of Supervisors. For consideration. I'll open it up to the panel.
The person asking the question might be alluding to the fact that if a roadway is built, there's land that may be needed for. Stormwater im- improvements, for example. I think in general, your, your answer applies, Dave, but for some of these very specific instances, we might have to look at them individually.
Thank you. It's a good point. Anybody else? Okay, another, uh, good question here in, in the Q and A boxes. Has consideration been given to ensure that owners of large parcels? Will not be charged large fees to the point that it will become a heavy burden for them to pay the fee? I ask this because Luzerne County implemented a similar program and property owners like the Wyoming Valley Mall were hit very hard. And some businesses have relocated or closed because of the increase in rent due to the county stormwater fee. I don't want to see businesses decide to relocate from Ferguson Township because of the stormwater fee. It's a great question. It's a great point. I'll look to the panel to respond. But not all at once.
You know. I was gonna say, you actually might be best positioned to answer it, but some, something that you did mention and others alluded to as well as Dave. Is that a lot of consideration was given to, you know, reasonableness and. Determination of the fee and the level of service of the program and, and spreading out the cost. So. I think there's some, you know, sensitivity to it. I don't, I don't know that I have the best answer though.
Well, I think that the experience again over the last five decades is that it is unique for. There to be any documentation that says a business chose to move because of a stormwater fee. Again, the principle of using impervious areas a meter is that transference of cost. Away from smaller, less intense, less demanding properties. To those properties that are indeed creating the, the largest demand for having a public infrastructure to both protect them. To improve the quality of the runoff, to address their access to a roadway network that is not flooded. I mean, there are lots of side benefits that occur to a business. But the principle being followed in this particular example is the idea that. The more intensely developed, the higher your contribution to the cost. I think Dave, both Daves actually have really reflected very importantly that. There is considerable, uh, thought to the potential financial impacts, especially under current conditions.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, you know, thank you for building on that. Is the total revenue generated by each, uh, well, actually, let me back up to this last question. That, that is a comment that will carry forward, um, you know, certainly along with all the comments and questions. So. You know, is there a maximum fee that, you know, that, that we would want to set as part of this program? You know, in order to ensure that we're not really, you know, causing undue financial hardship. That's something that we can. You know, we can bring the, the conversation forward with and, and give some consideration to and, and what that cap might look like. If it's, if it's implemented. So, um, next question is, is the total revenue generated by each of the cost approaches the same? So presumably the cost models are the, the difference in the fixed billing units, the equivalent runoff unit model versus the thousand square feet of impervious area. Elizabeth, do you want to speak to that or Virginia?
Sure. Yeah, the rates themselves are, um. Are the outcome of what are the costs for the program of services? So we establish with. So we establish with the advisory committee, with staff, with feedback from the board, what is the program that needs to be put in place? And so the same program is funded regardless of which approach is taken ultimately. Should the decision be made to move forward with a fee? So the variability, as you saw when Virginia was giving, you know, different potential impacts using two different rates, it all generates the same amount of money from the standpoint of what's needed because it's the program of services that's driving the mathematical calculations.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, anybody else want to build on that or think that pretty well covered it? If we pay for the stormwater fee individually, will the portion previously belonging to the property tax be removed? So I think this is, um, you know, again, speaks to that revenue neutral, um, issue that, that I touched on before. And, you know, just, you know, once again, it, it'll be, you know, the determination of, of the board of supervisors to decide whether, if they move forward with this fee, whether they want to offset that cost obligation. But, you know, another important point to consider is, you know, the, the winners and losers that are created as a result of that potential. So let's say that, you know, there's a translation of a quarter mil, point two five mils. Our millage is how we calculate our tax rate that we can reduce in order to achieve that revenue neutral position. So we blanket across the, you know, across all the township properties, a reduction in millage of, you know, a quarter mil. You know, that is going to, some of those in those properties that are affected are going to be, you know, very, are going to benefit from that greatly. Because, uh, you know, say you're outside the growth boundary under this model and you're a single-family residential property owner and your cost is whatever thirty-five, forty dollars a year. Well, that point two five mil reduction is going to be significantly less than what your, you know, your stormwater fee obligation is year to year. So you're, you're winning under that scenario. Somebody else who has a lot of, you know, a large amount of impervious or maybe inside the growth boundary has a higher stormwater fee obligation, a quarter mil may exceed, you know, in, in their, in far, depending on what their assessed value is, what their stormwater obligation, or excuse me, maybe less than what their stormwater fee obligation would be. So they don't, they don't come out on top under that. So even under a revenue neutral model, what is apparently revenue neutral, when you look at the books in the big picture, is not revenue neutral because it, it disproportionately impacts different property owners throughout the township depending on what your assessed value is, where you're located with respect to the regional growth boundary and your service level of service area, and what your obligation is under that stormwater fee. So, you know, again, not, not something that I would advocate as manager. Um, you know, not just for the reason I just described, but for the reasons that I described before. Uh, but ultimately the decision of the board of supervisors. You know, missing that next question about forested, uh, anyway, I'll, I'll go on to the next one. Has the township either researched or considered obtaining any funding through grants that are available to help pay for maintenance and improvements to township roads and streets that are considered federal aid routes? Uh, these types are typically bid and reviewed by PennDOT. Absolutely. And, you know, maybe even Dave can describe some of the, the, the grant projects that we might've been successful in throughout his, uh, long tenure here. Uh, but as I mentioned before, we're very hopeful that the Park Hills Drainage Way project, the construction of that and potentially some of the design as well, uh, will be funded through grant revenue streams. So we're always looking for grant opportunities. Um, we have a, a really excellent history of capitalizing on those opportunities for transportation projects, but other projects as well. So we're often looked at favorably by state and federal agencies because they know that we have that proven track record of delivering on our commitments that we make in our grant applications. Uh, but Dave or Ron, do you want to build on, on any of that or talk at all about your experience there?
Sure. I, I won't spend a lot of time, but the answer is yes. So we're familiar with the programs. Uh, Ron shares the Center County Metropolitan Planning Organization Technical Committee. Official on the coordinating committee. Uh, we're familiar with the grant processes, transportation enhancement, multimodal, funding through the tip and the long-range plan. Uh, we've received funding for projects like, uh, construction of Blue Course Drive, which was known as the Western Loop, construction of Old Gatesburg Road, uh, West College Avenue Streetscape Project, Pungar Mill Streetscape Project, Tutic Circleville Bike Path, so to name a handful.
That's exactly what I, what I, where I was thinking. So, you know, good, uh, good points there. Anybody else before I move to the next question?
Just the only thing I'd clarify for David is that, that most of those programs that, that Dave modric just mentioned there are not, um, strictly, funds that come off the tip from federal aid routes, the type of monies that could be expended from state funds. They're, they're more specific grant opportunities for multimodal. The, the, the exception being the, the Western Loop project that was a pure federal aid. Well, state aid, sorry, that was even state funds, not federal. That was state funds to do that one. So there are not many federal aid routes in Ferguson Township that you could actually try to seek some specific federal funds for. But we do try to get any projects we can on the, on the, on the 12-year plan and on the tip. Uh, but that also is a very, very competitive process. And, um, I'd just say that, that, you know, that, that funding source is shrinking as well. Um, it, it's kind of sobering right now as we look at the, the current long-range transportation plan that we're trying to pull together for the center county, uh, as well as looking at our transportation improvement grant program or, or, uh, current four-year plan that gets updated every two years. Um, there's just less and less revenues available, the consistent declining source of revenue. So, um, looking to the state for some of these funds is just really not a, a reasonable expectation.
Thank you, Ron, um, and Dave. So I'm just going to go back to another comment. I was trying to piece together sentries helped me. And this is, uh, the comment is this parcel would be completely forested and not agricultural. Um, and I think we, and it was a follow-up to the, the, to the question that was raised about fees being required on lands without a structure or impervious area. So I think we've addressed that, you know, the answer would be under what we proposed, we know, um, if it's a forested lot or, or whatever, you know, non-agricultural, not, not an active use vacant lot, not developed, it would not be subject to this fee. Next question, uh, has township engineer written all over it? Was the loading of contaminants from agricultural fertilization and its impact on runoff water quality considered when evaluating costs for non-growth areas?
So you're assigning them now, huh?
I reserve the, the right as township manager to do that if needed.
So, so this, the, the short answer is no. Um, specific pollutant loadings from any of the parcels wasn't really considered when we were taking a look at the, the different service areas. It was more a function of the, the services that the township has to provide. With respect to our infrastructure, uh, recognizing of course that we do have pollutant reduction measures that we have to implement. Although under our MS4 permit, our, our, um, the area that that applies to is only our urbanized area. So it does not apply to the majority of the agricultural lands or the pollute loadings that comes, uh, from that agricultural land. So there are some parcels within that boundary that are agriculture. So there is loadings assigned to that in our pollutant model. But it's probably a minor component compared to the rest of it.
Good point. Dave, you want to add?
Yes, since we don't have total maximum daily loads established, like a sewer plant, some of it we do, um, more, I don't know if I should use the word qualitatively through capture volume, you know, stream, stream buffers, those best management practices as opposed to, uh, a direct contaminant load removal.
That's a good point. Um, both good points. So, you know, it's, a- as, as Ron mentioned, you know, the, the, the short answer is no. But we, we are being mindful of and, and looking toward the future. And one of the eventual requirements that we may see as part of our Chesapeake Bay pollutant reduction strategy would be specifically to address and treat water quality issues. We're already, we're doing that sort of, as Ron mentioned, through sediment reduction. But if it ever advances to the point where we need to, as the sewer authority does, directly reduce our nitrogen and phosphorus, uh, out discharge into the Chesapeake Bay. You know, and we need to be able to demonstrate that we're doing that, meaning more of a qualitative statement or, or assessment or approach as opposed to just generally reducing sediment. You know, that's where that discussion may, may develop into that consideration. And, you know, it's hard to say where, what the future will hold. You know, this is a, our Chesapeake Bay strategies administered or, or begins at the federal level through the Environmental Protection Agency. Um, if anything, or priorities change with respect to that agency and, and that reduction load is reduced, that may reduce our obligation. If it goes the other direction, it may increase our obligation. The Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, uh, far and away is, uh, is tailing the other states that have Chesapeake Bay pollutant reduction, reduction strategies like New York and Virginia, who are, uh, doing far better at reducing their, uh, their discharge into the Chesapeake than what Pennsylvania is doing. So the presumption is that, you know, once the low hanging fruit, I guess, if you want to call it that, sewer authorities, municipalities, et cetera, are, are squeezed to our limit, meaning we can't identify any more projects to reduce our sediment reduction. That's when other industries like agriculture or like other, you know, other kinds of industrial uses, uh, may be targeted by the Environmental Protection Agency or the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection to, uh, mitigate some of their, their, uh, impact in addition to what they're already doing through their conservation plans, their soil management strategies, uh, et cetera. So, you know, it's, it's, um, it's a big topic for discussion, um, that continues to evolve year to year. So, um, next question is, what is the total revenue target? This is a question for Elizabeth, I think. Will it cover capital projects and how will credits be calculated? And we touched on some of this a little bit, but Elizabeth, do you want to, um, you know, revisit or expand on that?
Yeah. So the, taking the, um, roadway project revenue out of the mix of cost, recognizing that those projects are coming forward from different purposes and that kind of thing. The revenue projection for FY twenty-one would be one point two million dollars. Now that includes the ongoing costs that are underway and it explicitly adds, closer to six hundred thousand dollars in capital dollars. Again, these would be dollars that are outside of what the Transportation Improvement Fund would pay. So it is a significant investment. The largest thrust of that investment is in two areas. One, adding additional stormwater engineering capacity through the city engineer's office as well as initiating the assessment of the physical infrastructure. So the above-ground infrastructure in completing an inventory of that infrastructure. We don't have all of that within the database at this point. Getting all the inlets for which there are a couple of thousand, uh, getting that kicked off and those inspections underway. So it does include right off the bat, some investment in that corrugated metal pipe replacement program. But it also includes enhanced resources in the technical support area as well as getting the assessment work accomplished. Over eight years, if you're wanting to see where it grows, it reaches about one point nine million. Some of that is due to inflation. We do calculate inflation impacts in the numbers so that you stay current. A lot of it is increasing capital investment.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Yeah. And, and I would strongly encourage anybody who wants to take a deep dive into that projection and, um, you know, how those, uh, that, that revenue is being calculated or being proposed to take a look at the, um, the archive that's available on the stormwater fee, uh, section of our webpage, which I think we have linked to right on the homepage right now. And, or we have a, um, tab that's, that's specifically focused on it, correct, or something? I'm, I'm sorry, you, you can't see who I'm looking at. I'm looking at my assistant to the manager over here, Centrice, who is, um, i- is updating me as we speak. So, you know, that, that will give you a wealth of information about, you know, how that, uh, revenue has, has been proposed. How will a fee be assessed for privately owned farms of two hundred acres or more? Elizabeth, do you want to take that one as well?
That, the whole, uh, structure around the agricultural community is still under development. But the approach that we've been discussing at this point in a policy level is that the, uh, agricultural community would be in principally in that non-growth area. Their business enterprise activities on the farm would be treated as a business. Their residential portion of that property would be treated as a resident. Uh, and so the rate analysis we're working on right now is the impacts to the business operation. We have, uh, certainly recognized in using the Center County data on the type of property that there is a lot of agricultural property that is not, um, agricultural as a business, that they really are single-family homes. And so we're going back and really doing a fine depth analysis of what is truly agricultural business versus property that is used for residential purposes, but it's on a classified agricultural parcel. So we're working through that. We're not finished. Uh, but the basic thrust of analysis for an agricultural business is to separate the business from their residents.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, yeah, the, you know, the discussion of agriculture is developing and how that fee would be assessed, much like Elizabeth described. I think we can be sensitive to, you know, the needs of the farmers of Ferguson Township. They've been very engaged in this discussion. Um, we have a, a farmer that sits on our, uh, stormwater advisory committee. We've held coffee and conversation events out in the West End and we've had some really good discussions about this proposed fee. And, um, you know, and they, they brought in some very, they brought, brought some very valuable information to the table and some things for us to consider as we incorporate, um, you know, some of those suggestions into what we're proposing. So that, um, that'll continue to develop. Um, we are at just a time check at eight twenty-three here, and I do want to be respectful of everybody's time. We got a bunch more questions here. I'm going to try to get to them all. Uh, but we may do kind of like a rapid fire, you know, where we, where we address them in little, uh, sound bites, so to speak. And we will, you know, expand on those as we make them available, uh, on, on the website. So next question is, uh, we're in the landings. Uh, we have a very large stormwater runoff area on one side of our development. Will the individual residents be responsible for the payment of fees? Or does that runoff area act as a credit towards the management of infrastructure and reduce the fees, uh, costs to the residents? So, you know, I think the short answer is kind of yes to all of those questions, right? I mean, so, you know, you have a, a stormwater management facility that may be the responsibility of the Landings Homeowners Association. Um, you know, that common area would be assessed to the Landings HOA. It would then be presumably distributed amongst the property owners as part of your assessments, uh, and your, your homeowners association fees. Uh, but it would also be credited. It would be a credit that you could capitalize on that would reduce that overall, uh, obligation and reduce the fees to the residents. So I, I think I'm, I'm in good standing and I'll look to Dave and Elizabeth and Ron to say yes, and Virginia to say yes to all of those questions there. How often will the fees be increased? Well, Elizabeth, I'll just, I'll let you touch on that based on what we've modeled.
Sure. At this point, the, the cost model does not have a threshold in the sense we're trying to represent what the real cost would be over time. But in establishing the rate structure, one of the things, again, another policy decision becomes the stability of that rate. So the decision that would be presented to the board is whether they would want to see that rate remain constant for a certain period of time, whether they would want it to track to the actual budgeted cost on an annualized basis. If they would want to set a growth factor, uh, we do have some clients that establish that there'll be a four percent growth factor or a two percent growth factor or six. that there'll be a 4% growth factor or a 2% growth factor or a 6% growth factor. They, they base that policy decision on the change in levels of service and the ability to solve problems. So there are a number of options that we'll bring to the board for their input and consideration. So at this time, we, we don't have an absolute answer for you, uh, but it is not uncommon to see that the fee is held fairly steady for the first three, four, sometimes five years of the program, uh, with an anticipated adjustment that may occur later on as the program itself changes. But we will discuss that with the board.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, you know, just a quick addition, you know, I mean, and that's as, as Elizabeth noted, something that we've, you know, baked into our cost model and our projection. We're trying to be upfront, uh, certainly with the board, but you know, with residents as we proceed through these community engagements, uh, events that, you know, it would not be, you know, fair if, if we set the fee at a, at a bare minimum, basically just to get it, get it passed, get it implemented, only to turn around, you know, next year and recommend that the board, you know, double it. And, and also, so we need to be mindful, uh, and, and, you know, try to be attentive to the value that there might be added by, you know, kind of smoothing that cost out so that some years we may be adding, you know, we may be taking in more than we're spending. Other years we may be spending more than we're taking in, but with that fund balance that we might grow in that fund over the years, we should be able to absorb that and be resilient in any, you know, to, to any real dramatic changes in that fee structure. Because, you know, I can certainly, speaking for myself, again, as a resident, that, that wouldn't be very, um, you know, that wouldn't be very satisfying to me to not know what my obligation is going to be year to year, or to see dramatic swings in it based on what our, our needs and levels of service are. Next question is, an HOA owns a stormwater basin which collects private as well as public water. Who will maintain the basin, mow the yard, trim the trees and maintain the drains and head walls? I think we've touched on this, you know, just again, it, it kind of depends on the way the fee structure is, or the, the program is, is adopted, but what's been discussed would be a cost share, uh, you know, for repairs or, you know, to the basin based on what the percentage is of public runoff that's treated by that facility versus what's handled privately, internal to the development. Does anybody have anything to add to that or correct me on anything? I misspoke. Okay. If the MS4 permit, that's our municipal separate storm source system, this is our federal and, uh, permit requirement, state permit requirement, is rescinded or further defined that is not needed in this area, uh, by the state or president, would this fee go away? You know, the short answer again is, is no, uh, under what we've been discussing and proposing, because this, as I think we've described, is so much more than our MS4 obligations. If we were only trying to fund our MS4 permit obligations, you know, and this is a value statement, so I, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying this definitively one way or the other, but it would really call into question the, the benefit of enacting this fee. You know, is it worth going through all of this and all the administration and, and, you know, additional, uh, overhead just to cover our, our MS4 permit requirements, which are significant, don't get me wrong, but not as significant as the total package when you look at all of our cost centers that feed into our overall stormwater management budget and the proposed program. It may be if MS4 goes away, um, you know, in addition to making Ron's life a lot easier, we would probably, you know, we could certainly look at reduce that component of the fee and, and reducing our fee in accordance with the, you know, the savings, if you will, that may result from that. Uh, but, you know, realistically, I don't anticipate, uh, that as being very likely. I think the direction that the MS4 permit program is going is to expand rather than contract, uh, meaning each permit cycle, we have additional obligations and we just got our renewed five-year permit, um, within the last two weeks. We're seeing additional, uh, cost requirements, additional unfunded mandates as opposed to going the other way. Anybody want to add? I think that pretty well covered it. You said Penn State Water comes to Ferguson Township, but doesn't Ferguson Township Water go to Penn State? Are they going to charge you? So we, we've been having some, you know, and we're continuing to have some really close discussions with the university. Not only are they treating some runoff from, you know, Ferguson Township and vice versa, but they're also themselves an MS4 permit holder. So the exact, you know, way that that program may impact them is yet to be determined, but they've had a seat at the table throughout all of this, including representation on the Stormwater Advisory Committee. We're hearing their feedback and we're continuing to engage in those discussions. Anybody want to build on that? More, more to come on that is, is kind of where I'm going. Uh, this is more a comment than, than a question. When you say that the township is paying as well, that means we, the taxpayer are paying, same with Penn State paying, the taxpayers are paying. That's, that's certainly a true statement. And, and, you know, I appreciate the clarification. It is, um, you know, it is equally true that, you know, taxpayers are paying right now for our, our requirements under this model because that's how we're funding all of this mechanism. So, you know, that might defer some of the cost in some respects, because as I said, some, some people may, you know, pay higher tax rates or their, their assessed value may be one thing, but their stormwater obligation and their impervious surface may be, you know, reduced or maybe less than, you know, what their assessed value may indicate. So, you know, winners and losers kind of, you know, I hate to, to put it like that, but maybe there are people that pay more and there are people that pay less on, you know, both sides of this equation, including the, the model that we're, uh, proceeding with right now. But yeah, that's correct. And, and if, you know, the program were implemented and it was supplemented by the general fund, meaning if we weren't covering all of our expenditures via the stormwater fee and supplemented by the, the general fund, that would also be revenue that would be coming out of, uh, tax payments made through earned income tax, real estate tax, transfer tax, et cetera. We have a question here from, uh, one of our elected officials. Are, are roads considered in the total paved area calculation? If yes, to whom is it charged? Elizabeth, do you want to take that one?
The way that we address the roadway network currently is that it is not, uh, directly in the calculation. The roadway network is actually an integral part of the drainage system. And so it's not uncommon, as we've seen best practices for implementing utilities across the country, that the roadway network itself is taken out of the calculation, that it is there as a part of the services that are being delivered rather than being separate from the stormwater program. Again, that's best practice. It's evolved over the last five decades, but it's a fairly consistent approach taken by communities a, a, all across the US and Canada.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Next question is, um, you know, starts, uh, you, you mentioned that older areas are the problem versus newer developments. Why don't the older ones pay more? And, and, you know, I'll, I'll open it up to the panel, but I would start by saying, you know, really under the current structure, quite frankly, the older developments are paying less than what some of the newer developments are paying because your assessed value might be lower. We don't, we haven't had a countywide reassessment done in many years. So, you know, some of those older properties, those older developments are based on assessed values that may have been determined, you know, 10 or more years ago. And, you know, with the way property values are continually increasing in our Happy Valley, we know that newer developments will have a higher assessed value. So the way it's structured right now, one could argue that it's an inequitable way based on their contribution to the problem. The older developments paying less because their assessed value is lower, they have lower real estate taxes, the higher, uh, assessed value, newer developments paying more, um, because their, their taxes are a little bit higher. So that's, that's one way that you could, you know, look into that or look at that. But I'll open it up to the group if there's any additional thoughts.
Well, impervious area is the yardstick and credits are a mechanism for some properties to reduce the fee.
It's a good point too. So, you know, older developments as well, you might, uh, while, you know, we're talking maybe about a standardized billing unit for single family residential property owners. And, you know, that may kind of balance that equation a little bit, but if you have areas with more impervious surface because it's an older development and maybe they're not, they weren't as considerate or as attuned to, uh, pervious pavement or other kinds of, um, you know, reductions in, uh, in, in, in pervious pavement, uh, you know, that, that may bear out in the implementation of this fee and it may result in some of the those older developments, uh, paying more. So, and that, that may be more applicable to commercial than it is residential, but, you know, it's something that is, is a good observation, but one could, right now is, is inequitable or unfair in the way that it's assessed. We have a comment here, not so much a question, says on North Butt Street, there are four properties and on College Avenue, United Rentals that belong to Penn State. So, you know, again, this, this gets back to my comment earlier that discussions with the university are ongoing. You know, right now, the way our tax structure works with respect to, to Penn State is that Penn State owned properties pay a fee in lieu of taxes depending on what that property is used for. So places like United Rentals or on West College Avenue, the mixed martial arts facility that are owned by the university but leased out to other tenants for non-academic related or non-educational related purposes typically pay a fee in lieu of tax. And there's a schedule and there's an agreement that accompanies that, uh, that's been negotiated by the Center County Tax Office, as well as all the participating municipalities that are home to Penn State owned property. And that, uh, annually, those, those fees, uh, get reviewed and looked at by the tax office and any new properties, uh, that are, that under the ownership of the university get evaluated in terms of what their use is. So if it's used for a non-academic purpose, it's on that, it should be on that schedule of fee in lieu. If it's used for academic, it's tax exempt. So, you know, you can draw your own conclusions from that, but, um, you know, we, we do have some, um, you know, negotiation, if you want to, or to, to say the least, with, with the university on how some of these variables will be considered when presenting this program to the Board of Supervisors, who will ultimately decide, you know, how they, how they want it to apply for those kinds of, of applications. Next question is, how are these fees assessed? I think we've, we've covered the different kinds of cost models, uh, in the presentation. I think this question may have been submitted before we got to that slide. I'll just move right along. This one is, are you, are you kidding me with charging your residents for this and not all of the new construction you allowed? I think that's a, that's a, uh, values judgment or a qualitative statement wrapped in a question. Truth is, we are absolutely charging, uh, you know, the property owners of the new construction, uh, that's been permitted in the township over the years, just like older property owners are assessed. I mean, that's one of the, you know, the, the benefits of a fee structure in this way is that it levels the playing field, uh, such that it, it allows a, a mechanism to assess all property owners based on their contribution to the problem, you know, so to speak, irrespective of, you know, the age of the development or, you know, what, um, you know, what, um, you know, kind of development is student housing, is it, you know, commercial, whatever it might be. Anybody want to add anything to that? Okay. Where in the township are the repairs needed most and how much will they cost? Ron, you want to take a stab at that?
So specifically with the respect to the repairs, um, you know, it's those older neighborhoods probably that we're seeing it now, although if you wait 10 or 15 years, it'll be those neighborhoods that are 10 or 15 years older. So, um, right now we're seeing it in, in those neighborhoods that have been out there for 20 or 30 years and even longer. But we shouldn't be lulled into thinking that the fee, uh, once we fix those problems is going to go away because all of our infrastructure ages. Uh, and the stuff that's more recent in construction ultimately at some point is going to need some, some measure of maintenance, uh, or capital repairs. We do have better materials now than we did before. So we do believe that, uh, as we move forward, the extent of the repairs won't be as dramatic initially, um, but over time, the system will continue to, to see the need for maintenance.
We have 33 miles of storm pipe under our roads, of which 16 is corrugated metal pipe. You saw a picture earlier of a, one such section. And it can cost up to or more than a hundred dollars a foot to either line that pipe or pull it out of the ground and put it back in. So that's, if you think about it and you line up 17 miles of corrugated metal pipe, you might stretch from here, from here to Belfont and it might cost about a hundred dollars a foot. And mostly in the older neighborhoods, as Ron said.
That, thank you, Dave. It's a good question. So, uh, sorry to ask so many questions. Uh, this participant writes, but what about waiting to see how much everything costs before doing a fee? And, and I, I think we touched on this a, a little bit, but you know, again, just to kind of reiterate the importance of being, you know, proactive in our projections of this, because if we wait for our infrastructure to degrade or fail or other needs to emerge and, you know, we're, we're going to be playing a lot of catch up and our costs are going to be, you know, magnitudes likely greater than what they would be if we took this proactive approach of, you know, realignment, re-linement of pipes where we can, or, you know, cambering and assessing our, our needs, uh, you know, having, having that model in place in the long run will be more cost effective and, uh, will, you know, ultimately provide better service delivery and a better, uh, stormwater management system than if we were just to wait and kind of wait and see and make adjustments, which is, you know, kind of in a way what we've historically done. You know, we've, while we have been taking measures particularly in the last five to 10 years to be more proactive in assessing our stormwater management needs, you know, prior to that, it was, you know, kind of a break fix or, or as opportunities presented themselves. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't the case up until recently that we were, you know, cambering or relining our stormwater pipes. These are kind of new developments that, um, you know, we've only relatively recently in the grand scheme, uh, began to pursue. So, um, does anybody have any additions to that comment? We're kind of trying to make our way through these last couple of questions. I got a few by email I'm going to, I'm going to get to. All right. Um, what will happen to the money that used to go to stormwater? Uh, you know, and, and this is, it's an important question. It, you know, we addressed it with some of the revenue neutral discussions we had earlier. But certainly, you know, you can look at our overall budget and the projections and expenditures and the projections in our fund balance. Take a look at our, you know, capital improvement program, which, uh, kind of models out years and you can begin to see where some of our, uh, you know, revenue shortfalls will likely emerge. Our capital reserve fund, for example, which is supplemented through transfers from the general fund, you know, that with some of our, you know, added capital costs and capital projects is one of those funds that I, you know, as manager and Erica's finance director are watching very carefully to make sure that we can maintain a strong reserve and a strong fund balance. Uh, I think we all learned a, a real hard lesson or, or, you know, still to learn a hard lesson from this pandemic, not just in our own individual lives, but, you know, with respect to our government, because, you know, this is something that is going to have, uh, an effect on our bottom line. And we're going to be looking at those financial reserves and fund balances that we've built up, you know, going back decades with, you know, prudent financial management and good fiscal policy. And we'll be leaning on some of those to weather the storm without having to, you know, cut expenditures dramatically or raise taxes or do some of those other things that really frankly are, are not, um, you know, not attractive to anybody, uh, you know, certainly not elected officials. Next question is, how much will surveying cost? Elizabeth, do you have a, uh, or, or Virginia ready answer to that or? What are your thoughts there?
Assessment of the storm pipe.
That's what I would, I would presume that's what that means, assessment of the storm.
Yeah. So it's about $5 a linear foot, 25,000 plus per mile. And then Elizabeth of Virginia might refresh our memories as to how much of that per year we're doing in the cost model.
I don't have that right in front of me, Dave. Sorry.
I remember, I, I think it's in a neighborhood, we're, we're trying to get the, um, entire system assessed in seven years.
Right.
By 33 divided by seven times 25.
Yeah. I'm trying to pull it up real quick to see if I can be efficient at doing that, but...
That's okay. And we can, we can move on and we can always come back to that one as well. Won't large, the next question is, won't large property owners use their credits to get out of the fee even if they still create an impact? And, um, you know, that I think is a lot of the, the driver behind what many communities do or most communities do, which is set a, a cap on what credit you may take advantage of. a cap on what credit you may take advantage of, a percentage of the overall fee, such that even if you are, you know, demonstrate that you're doing, you know, you have a basin and you've got these other, you know, stormwater management facilities, rain gardens, bioswales and uh all these other, uh, you know, nice things that we encourage uh property owners to have. You would not be able to take a hundred percent uh of of a reduction in your um, in your in your overall cost, because, you know, and it's important to separate, you know, the this from, you know, a runoff tax or a runoff fee. And, you know, a a fee that would be assessed to, you know, handle our our stormwater management obligations, because even if you are can can prove beyond a shadow of a doubt that there's not a drop of water that goes on your property that has ever conveyed to a public stormwater management facility or to a management facility that you're not yourself maintaining and responsible for. There are still underlying cost obligations that, you know, are attributable to our MS four requirements, our other fixed costs, staffing, et cetera. Um, inspections of of our, um, you know, municipal wide facilities that are required by that program that are, you know, assessed regardless of, you know, what you're doing on your own property to impact. So we want to be, you know, certainly liberal in how we apply those credits and we want to make it, um, you know, something that is enticing to to residents to take advantage of. We want to encourage, not just because of the credit it offers, but because of the education and awareness and the benefit to our groundwater, we want to encourage residents to participate in things like rain barrel workshops or, you know, to install their own, you know, rain gardens or management, um, uh, you know, uh, uh, facilities. But, you know, and so we want to make that meaningful, but we also can't do that to the point where it dilutes or or defeats the purpose of the fee. So I think, um, you know, that by capping that credit, we would address this concern. Uh, what are the projected needs? Well, I, you know, I think we touched on a lot of those throughout the presentation. Uh, appreciate the question. And again, I would just refer you to the webpage. Um, you know, for more, for as much detail as you, you know, you could possibly want on that, you know, to to respond to that question or follow up, you know, afterward and or or, you know, come and attend a stormwater advisory committee meeting. We're, I think we're doing those virtually. But, you know, the public is welcome to attend. It's not a, not to participate per se, but to attend and to kind of be a fly on the wall and observe and, you know, the conversation and and hear what's being said. Um, you know, so that's that's where a lot of that detail has been borne out, but there's a a great deal of it, not only in this presentation, but also available on the website. I am going to turn to our, my email questions here real quick. I I just a handful of them. Um, the first question was, uh, where can we find a link to the website that shows the growth and non growth areas? Uh, so that you, I guess presumably so you know where your property would lie. We could make that available on the webpage if it's not already. Um, since Teresa's made a note of that, or or Nick, who uh is our communications person, who's also in attendance. Uh, so if it's not available on the website or if it's not prominent on the website, we can do what we can to improve that. Um, next question is submitted by email or by phone, I should say, is is what is the estimated administrative cost for operating the fee program versus the flat tax program? So I guess this would be versus if we just did a generalized tax increase. What does that administrative cost look like? Uh, Elizabeth or or Virginia, do you want to speak to any of the details on that?
We have not broken that out that specifically. I mean, the total administrative burden for the entire program is around sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Now that includes leadership's salaries, the direct expenses. Um, it it's, it's not measured down to sending a bill out in a certain way. The the larger, I guess, burden to administration of either approach really is the classification of the property into which billing factors they get assigned to, and then the ongoing and maintenance of the impervious area data. But the the impervious area data needs to be maintained with regardless of which methodology might be chosen. The the impervious area data is of value to the public works operation to your planning department for other purposes. It's not just there to support the fee. So there are ongoing practices and strategies that are used inside the organization today uh to know when permits get issued, to know when new development occurs. Those are the kinds of triggers that would have the additional impervious area added to the inventory of impervious area on a parcel by parcel basis. So it's a very minor cost in in consideration of the total program. But I I'm sorry, we didn't break it down to effort to maintain the impervious area, for example. Oversight of the program, the administrative cost, the the things that require leadership to take care of are identical regardless of how the bill is distributed.
Yeah, I think on the, um, it's the, that's probably how I'd respond. And well, Dave, do you, did you want to say something on that?
Just that I think there's going to be a administrative cost um either way. The user fee um will have more mostly for impervious coverage and for the credit program administration, as Elizabeth mentioned. Although I don't think it's that significant and we haven't broken it out.
Right. So certainly, you know, there's there's obligations uh on the administrative end to make sure that properties are assessed correctly. We've got to be able, you know, we're collecting the revenue, we're assigning it, we're you know, making sure that it's going for the the, you know, to the designated use. So, you know, that that administrative uh burden, while difficult to quantify, I think is is very real. And I think the, you know, in all likelihood, it would be a little bit higher than it would be with a general tax increase. But again, that's a, you know, matter of policy for the Board of Supervisors to consider. You know, whether that uh administrative cost is outweighed by the, you know, the the issues that may be created or the inequity that may be created with a general tax increase as we described here today. So uh, the last question, which is a great way to end, was was submitted through the phone, uh, phone call was, um, will the stormwater fee ever go away? Um, ever is a very long time. And so I, you know, I certainly can't say at all that that, you know, it wouldn't ever go away or or that it would. Um, I think maybe a better way to respond to that, at least to the degree that we're able to as staff and, you know, the the consultant would be to say that, you know, these costs historically have trended upward and not downward. And we project that that cost project that 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 trend line will continue uh in in the way that it has been. And so we don't have any reason to think that our stormwater management obligations will be reduced in the in the future. Um, in fact, we have a a great deal of information that suggests the contrary. So, you know, if that's any indicator of whether the stormwater fee or maybe more appropriately put, whether our uh cost driver associated with stormwater management or our liability associated with stormwater management will ever go away. You know, I I think the answer to that is is no. Um, I think as we, you know, on an annual basis, see, you know, increased flooding, higher precipitation, a lot of the predictive climate models and and the Commonwealth are suggesting that that trend is also going to increase, meaning we'll be dealing with more flooding events which will require more investment in public infrastructure, upsizing of our, you know, um, inlets and our storm sewers and our and our pipes and drainage systems so that it can accommodate the that intensity of rain events and flooding and be able to disperse it appropriately and manage it appropriately without it causing some real undue um, you know, hardships on folks, you know, through flooding and and through other uh environmental problems that that may create. Uh, you know, that that is, I I think, you know, one of the bigger concerns that I certainly have as as manager, I think Dave and Ron share in public works and certainly on the part of the elected officials, that the unknowns, more so than even the knowns, which we know are increasing uh are are equally as, if not more concerning. What, you know, what does the future hold? What's that going to look like? Is our infrastructure sufficient? You know, are we going to be looking, I mean, at designing for, you know, is the hundred year storm going to be what used to be the five hundred year storm? You know, or or, you know, is the fifty year storm what, you know, now what used to be the hundred year storm? Are are we going to be seeing these with such frequency that we need to really start to be, you know, proactive uh and 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 reactive as well, but make that investment uh on the onset so that we're not trying to um, you know, contend with some really bad uh consequences of not not appropriately managing this. So um, that's all I have to say about that unless anybody had anything to add. And and that includes our questions. So, um, we actually made it uh within the time that I was hoping we would make it. Uh, I was hoping we would get uh wrap up by nine o'clock. I want to thank our panelists, uh, you know, staff and the consultants for all of your um, you know, great assistance and and participation in this. I want to thank all of the attendees, particularly those who stuck it out with us. I know this was not short. Uh, so I'm really appreciative of the interest and the questions, which are all excellent. Comments, which were all great. We will consolidate these and get them up on the webpage so that you can refer back to them. And again, I I encourage you and invite you to continue to participate in this conversation all the way up to and including the public hearing where the Board of Supervisors being asked to consider this. You know, our our goal as staff and consultants is to make sure that you all, as residents and stakeholders are appropriately informed and educated. I don't, I don't want this to be a surprise to anybody, or if it is, I don't want it to be, you know, the through lack of effort on our part. I I don't want anybody to be able to say, well, we didn't know about this and you didn't try to reach us. I I want to reach you all. We, so I did the mailer. I know this uh format what maybe wasn't ideal, but it, you know, it's what uh we're we're having to to work with uh in these virtual meeting environments. Uh, and we'll continue to have these discussions, continue to um put information out through our electronic media, our print media, our social media. Uh, keep an eye on those and I'll I'll open up to the panel for any final thoughts or words that you may have before we adjourn.
And I certainly appreciate the level of engagement and and the kinds of questions that are being asked. They're they're very appropriate and pointed and really very helpful to the guidance that we receive from the township, from the advisory committee and ultimately from the board. So I thank you personally for taking the time to participate with us.
Thank you for your time tonight. I recognize a lot of familiar names and some that I have seen for the first time, so it's nice to meet you. Thanks and good night.
Thank you, everybody. Good night and uh be safe.